Mr. Toth.
Yes. Mr. Beryl Patel. Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Rivera. Mr. Vishal Patel. Ms. Anjana Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Toth, opening statement.
Yes, sir. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, C-231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Office. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Mr. Toth.
Yes, I will now read the adjournment to privileged session to discuss confidential employee matters and confidential student matters.
Litigation also, Mr. Toth.
I'm sorry, and litigation also, pending litigation. In accordance with NJSA Section 10:4-12, the Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following: pending litigation, student matters, confidential, personal, and board matters. So I have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we'll be going to the closed session. I promise around 7:00, 7:15. Thank you.
Well, to order, we'll reconvene to open session. Motion to reconvene to open session. Time is now 7:08.
Motion.
Mr. Schneider.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll reconvene to open session now. First thing on the agenda we have is a presentation of our assessment data, Mrs. Gomer and Mr. Cohen.
Good evening, Board of Education, President Beryl Patel, Vice President Joe Romano, Dr. Alderelli. We're here today for many different reasons, but for me and Mr. Cohen here, we're here to talk about our assessment results from the past year. The first thing we wanted to talk about is the picture of our district. It is changing, and one of the things we wanted to point out is that although our enrollment only increased 500 over one year, there are some significant changes. Our economically disadvantaged students increased by about 5% in one year, which is almost about 1,000 students, and the same is the case as you go down. Another interesting fact about our T-ins and T-outs, this is the number of children that are going out and into our district each year, which also amounts to about 2,000 students. So that means that there is a significant amount of mobility in our district at this point. Some schools actually have a much higher rate than that, which obviously causes this average. So one nice thing is that our results do reflect a steady increase in our scores post-pandemic. It's been steady and little, but still good. And another thing that I wanted to point out is that the students tested in grade three this year were in kindergarten in 2019, '20, which was our COVID year, and then in grade one in 2021. As we know, kindergarten through second grade are pivotal years for our students, which is where they learn all of their foundational skills and learn how to read. Once students are in third through fifth grade, they are reading to learn, and so if we do not get those students in their kindergarten through second grade years, we are functioning at a gap already. Despite that, we are still trending up, and we are about 16.8% over state for meet and exceeds in ELA. Here's a distribution of the different achievement levels. And here are some of the subgroups. The next three slides, including this one, are our subgroups, and I am super happy to say that we have increases in exceeding for all of our subgroups for race, for elementary, which is a very exciting point. Again, elementary also in increase in exceeding for this subgroup as well, and also for program. It was largely flat for students in Special Ed 504 and Free and Reduced at the district level, but this is still a good thing for us, knowing our kids were in COVID at that time. So some things that we've been looking at, so the strengths, we have still got steady growth. We're 16.8% over the state. We have an increase in exceeding expectations for grades three through six, and our subgroups for race and gender increased in exceeding expectations for ELA, and subgroups for all programs stayed flat or increased. Needs and next steps, we know we have to continue looking at our multi-tiered intervention systems, and we have been increasing our small group instruction and the quality of it. We are also identifying students for our high-intensity tutoring program that has been, that we received a grant for from the state, and we are also hoping to use some more online plakative forms at home. We did change some curriculum over the summertime to address scaffolding and pacing. We're continuing our phonics cohorts to build up our foundational skills at those primary levels, and then we also trained our third-grade teachers in phonics first in order to expand their toolkit. In math, we have this, an 18% differential at the district level higher than the state, and we are up in exceeding for grade four. Here again is a distribution of the achievement levels. Again, the next three slides will address achievement levels for subgroups, and at elementary, we were flat or exceeding, or went up with exceeding and meeting. The elementary increased in subgroups for program in the exceeding expectations range. Okay. Response to our math data is that our state, our differential is 18% higher than the state. Our growth in grade four was exceeding expectations, and subgroups for race, gender, and program generally increased in exceeding expectations. Again, we're still focusing on our multi-tiered intervention system. We've also still been working on the quality of small group instruction. We're going to be using those online programs for the same things. Next, we have science. This is only tested in three grades, grades five, eight, and 11. Overall, we're 18% above the state in levels three and four, which is meeting and exceeding. In our subgroups, we know that we decreased slightly in three and four. It is something that we're looking at as the year goes on, and the same is seen here. One interesting note on this particular one for those special programs is that the meeting increased at elementary for 504, Free and Reduced, and Special Education, so that is definitely a plus. Just mentioned those strengths. Our needs and next steps is to increase hands-on, more hands-on science experiences and make sure that we're making time for those science experiences. We're considering scheduling changes for the coming year as well in order to do that. The WIDA access testing results relate to our multilingual learners. They're tested every year. It's K through 12 and monitors our progress in social and academic English. It's anchored in the standards that are put out by WIDA, and there are four language domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and there is a cutoff score of 4.5 in order to exit the ELL program. There are the results and strengths. So we did exceed our goal of the number of MLs reaching the 4.5 cutoff score. We've had consistent growth, improved our program design and structure, so we have increased our sheltered instruction training. We have included high-intensity programs, and we now have, as you know, we're into our second year of our dual-language Spanish program as well. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Cohen.
All right, good evening. Thank you to the board and Dr. Alderelli for the opportunity to talk about some of the other test scores. I'm going to talk about the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment as well as the DLM, Dynamic Learning Maps. I did want to take an opportunity just to touch upon the secondary level of NJSLA. I'm going to be very brief. Ms. Gomer does a great job in terms of looking at the NJSLA data from a district perspective. Being newer to the district, I did want to take a little zero-in look at the secondary level, looking, and we wanted to look at it more just a comparison to last year, look more of, a little bit more of a longitudinal look. Of course, the data only goes back three years, because after three years, you hit COVID, and we didn't want to compare to test scores before COVID, because that's like apples and oranges. The story is very similar to, I'm going in the wrong direction, sorry about that. So the story of the data is very similar to the district data, of course. I just want to highlight, so this is data, and a lot of the data that we're putting up, it's very small, but we're going to post this on the website and via live feed tomorrow, so you'll have an opportunity to kind of dive deeper and look closer at the data. So tonight's really just looking at it nutshell. Up here is enrollment data for secondary, and the reason why I wanted to highlight and drown home a point that Ms. Gomer made already, we're looking at scores that, for the most part, have held steady over the last year as well as the last two years when we look at the secondary level, and that is in light of the fact that there's been slight increase in enrollment, but also Ms. Gomer highlighted the point that there's a lot of transience, right? So for a district to hold steady in terms of performance in light of increased enrollment and a lot of transience and increase in economic disadvantage is actually a huge celebration. I wanted to give a lot of kudos to our teachers, our power professionals, our supervisors, our building administration for holding steady in light of the added changes that come when you get increased enrollment, when you have students come in and out. It is always extra work and extra effort to maintain the level of performance when you have transience, when you have increasing enrollment and things like that. So I do want to just give a lot of kudos to our staff across the board, because while holding steady is something that we would, we expect to increase, we expect to improve these, and we have plans in which to do that, but I also wanted to recognize that. So in, while in light of all this, we saw a slight increase in our language arts over the last two years. We saw an even nicer little bit of increase in our math over the last two years, and as well in science, slight increase. In terms of our national, our New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, it covers the standards for English Language Arts up to grades 10 as well as algebra and geometry, and is now being used as a graduation pathway, one of the, one of the graduation pathways. As well, we see a slight increase. One point I want to highlight here when we talk about our NJGPA scores, we did see a, an increase over the last two years of 15%, which is definitely something to celebrate, right? The biggest jump occurred between 22 and 23, and the reason for that is in 2022, NJGPA did not count for graduation, and in 2023, it does start to count. So you see a jump in kids taking it more seriously and for more accountability. But something to highlight here, over the last two years, students with IEPs, for the most part, have been exempted from taking New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, and then federal requirements changed, and now basically all students are taking the exam. We see a dramatic increase in the number of students in grade 12. That's a large, that reflects that. Whenever you're, you're, we're exempting students, and now all students are taking the exam, and you still see holding steady or increase, again, another reason to celebrate. These are the subgroup data. Again, this will be posted, so you will be able to dive deeper into the subgroup data. One thing to highlight and celebrate is that we did see a 5% increase in our ELL students' graduation readiness. So in terms of next steps, needs and next steps, as Ms. Gomer mentioned, we as a district are really dedicated to doing data-driven instruction and intervention. At the middle school, we're adding tools in which to do that. In terms of Lexia is a very high-powered adaptive program that all of our middle school students in language arts are getting access to and using on a regular basis. We're giving training for our teachers on how to use that data to support struggling students, and we're adding Tier Two interventions, which is meeting students in the classroom more consistently when we identify that they need support. And then at the high school level, we brought on a, we weren't using data previously. Now we have a tool called Linkit, which will allow us to really identify students, where they are, their learning and progress monitor throughout the year, quickly identify students that are struggling. We brought on interventionists as well as a literacy coach to provide support to our teachers to address students that are struggling, as well as provide timely intervention for students in language arts as well as in math. So the story is the same in math, data-driven instruction and intervention, training for teachers. We've been able to really bolster up our number of interventionists, so we thank the board for that support. It's made a huge difference in our ability to help students in a timely way so that they don't fall behind. And then in terms of our, our science, we brought back quarterly assessments as well as a, a, a newest assessment tool called Formative, which allows us to collect quicker data in real time. And our instructional goal for the year is to engage students in real-world inquiry and then have them generate their own questions that they can research. So it increases motivation and interest. Now I'll talk about the DLM testing results. The test is for students that qualify with IEPs with significant cognitive disabilities. It is an online and adaptive tool and requires extensive individualized instruction in order to meet the students' needs for DLM. The data is up here. Again, this will be posted. You do see an increase from 2022, and that increase is maintained into 2024. In talking to Dr. Tuie, he attributes a great deal of that increase in proficiency to some training that was provided to the staff in terms of how to gear instruction as well as assessment so that it increases student performance. So the needs and next steps will be to continue that training and developing our staff. With that all being said, thanks, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cohen and Mrs. Gomer. Now we will move on to the next item in the agenda. That's President's Report, that's my report. Usually every meeting I read reports and provide updates and everything, respecting all of you who are here for a particular topic today, one way or other. I will skip my report and not speak anything and try to, because I know everyone is waiting, so I'll pass it on to Dr. Alderelli for Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Board President Patel. I'm going to begin my report with some of the, the pieces that are currently on the agenda. As you could see, in the month of October, we actually celebrated our Week of Respect and our Week of Respect in schools, promote kindness, understanding, presentations on anti-bullying initiatives, encourage students to, you know, engage in pro-social behavior in a creative and supportive, inclusive environment. None of that is achieved without the fabulous staff that we have here in Edison Township, so I just wanted to commend everybody and all their efforts and the images that I saw not only on social media but on our website and some of the materials that were passed forward from our central, from our building-level administration. For the Board of Education members, I had the opportunity to attend the Edison Chamber of Commerce event that happened earlier in the month. That was an opportunity where they celebrated all of the teachers of the year as well as the support staff, too. It was truly a wonderful event, an acknowledgement of the work that we do here in Edison Township as well as a partnership with the town, and I think, I might have mentioned to a couple Board members, but I know that I've talked about this in relationship to my central office team as well, too. We really made some great connections in relationship to some of our local businesses to provide internship opportunities for our students at our high schools and our middle schools, and I think that as we continue those conversations, it'll be a wonderful opportunity to get our students out into our community with our residents and our business owners to provide them with real-world experiences and on-the-job trainings. Some other pieces that are on the agenda as well, too, we have our upcoming American Education Week, celebrates a vital role of education in fostering growth, community opportunities for students across our schools and across our nation as well, too. Just a reminder for members in the audience, those that are watching, we are closed on Friday as well as next week in celebration of Diwali, so Happy Diwali, which I believe is Friday, Friday, November 1st. We also have our Teachers Convention as well as our upcoming national elections. I also want to take this opportunity because this board meeting is prior to Veterans Day. As always, I know I speak on behalf of the board, that, you know, we honor those who serve and protect our country, so special thank you for those, for Veterans Day and for those Board of Education members as well as members of our community. Be on the lookout for the district newsletter, The Insider, the very popular Insider, which will be, I believe, posted on November 11th when we get back, or the week of November 11th. This fall edition is going to highlight students and some of our new staff as well, too. And we do a wonderful job with our Director of Communications in posting that information as well as all of the individuals that contribute to its content. An update to the board in relationship to transportation, which is always a hot topic. Our subscription busing opened up again, I believe, prior to the October, I think it was October 1st. Yep, just about October 1st. We are currently adding an additional 475 subscription students. That was added between 10/1 and 10/13. The prior number of subscription students was 2,513, which is a total of 209, 2,988. I did get a question from one of the board members on the stage asking me how that was in comparison from this year to the last year. It's actually an increase in 400 as opposed to the 200 that I thought so. Congratulations to our transportation department. You know, they're doing a really wonderful job in making sure that, you know, we're maximizing those seats on the bus and getting everybody all settled. We do have 248 that are eligible and on the waiting list, so hopefully we're able to place them sooner than later. And the, the last component of, of my speech tonight will focus on our, our strategic plan. I am committed, and as I've told this board, too, to making portions of our board meeting, especially during my speech, addressing the strategic plan and the progress, and the progress towards the strategic plan. And one of the things that I, I wanted to do was highlight a live dashboard that we are going to be rolling out on our website during the month of November. It will provide an opportunity for our community members, our students, our Board of Education members to track our progress towards our goals in our specific pillars and where we are in relationship to achieving those goals, as well as identify the artifacts, documents, things along those lines that will demonstrate our progress toward it. So it's not just, you know, us saying, hey, we're, you know, we're 70% complete. You'll actually see an artifact that relates to, to those pieces or a narrative or, or something in that, in that effect. One of the, the pieces I always want to do is also remind us and, and our board and everybody that's part of this meeting is our mission and our vision. These are new mission and vision statements that came out of our strategic plan. I will be highlighting those in each and every single meeting as we focus on our students as well as the mission that we have in hand in educating them. And I think one of the pieces, too, is that you can see on the dashboard, we have our homepage as well as a strategy page, if we can move to that, and this actually tracks our progress live. So we have, we have our co-chairs of each of the individual pillars, wellness, engagement, finance, portrait of a graduate, as well as programs and pathways. This is an example of finance and infrastructure, and as you could see, in some areas, we are well on our way to almost 100% completion within those individual strategy sessions, and in others, we, you know, at this point in time, we need to do a little bit of work on, but the goal is to make sure that we're being transparent in achieving those goals. As you could see, just a couple examples right here in relationship, we've already conducted our demographic study. We're about 80% complete with our long-range facilities plan and a couple of other of those pieces. And as you click and kind of look on those next slides, you'll be able to see an in-depth look about not only what the individual goal is, but who's responsible for it as well. So you'll be able to see how we're tracking this, what those modific, what, what those artifacts are in order to make sure that we don't lose our eye on the ball, and that's the completion of our five-year plan, which I couldn't be more proud of and appreciate the support of not only this board but the members of the community that have contributed towards that. And in closing, that is the conclusion of my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Alderelli. Next is our student representatives from both the high schools, Foster's Edison High School, Derek Durek.
Hey, everyone. My name is Derek Durek, and I'm the Edison High School Student Council President. And since last month's meeting, the main thing I have to report is a successful homecoming week. Many students participated in the spirit days we had each day leading up to that Friday where we had the pep rally, which went very well. Each fall sports team was hyped up by the students as they walked across the track, and for entertainment, we had inflatable costumes and water bucket dunking on students and teachers. And that night, Edison football crushed South Brunswick in the homecoming game, just as I predicted last week. And the homecoming dance itself, the next day, that Saturday, of course, went well with over 600 students in attendance. The next event we'll be having at the school is volleyball for charity, which will be in a few weeks from now. And going back to football, Edison punched their ticket to the playoffs last Friday by beating up on Patterson Eastside and is now traveling about an hour south this Friday to take on the number-two seed Rankoas Valley in around one of the postseason, so make sure to come out and support. And in other Edison sports news, the girls' soccer team just won the GMC Invitational, defeating Middlesex in the final round, and the girls' tennis team has had a great season with a record of 13-5, and the girls' volleyball team, who's also having a great season just yesterday, beat Timothy Christian High School. And now, within the school, the only complaint that I've heard recently are from the seniors dealing with the stress of college applications, which are due this Friday for early action and early decision, and those seniors feel that their school workload should be decreased in the week before the application deadline, and I think that's something I can get behind since every student's future right now is on the line and college applications should be every senior's applying to colleges' top priority. But overall, everything has gone well so far this year, and as always, I look forward to more Edison success.
Thank you, Derek. Next is JP Stevens, Sanvi Bhurigam.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sanvi Bhurigam, and I'm one of the two presidents of the Student Council at John P. Stevens High School. Students are two months into the school year, meaning we are completely back to our normal schedule of classes, clubs, and events, which I will be discussing tonight. JP hosted its, its annual club fair, which proved extremely successful. New clubs such as the Hawks of Wall Street, Biology Club, Sanskrit Club, and C Club allow for students of all interests to stay involved after school hours. The Student Council has hosted our yearly freshman social, where freshmen get to meet their friends, mesh with students from other middle schools, and enjoy many fun activities. Both events were a huge success. In terms of athletics, I'm happy to say that the JP Fall Sports Teams have been knocking it out of the park. Our football team has won their last senior night against Roseville Park High School. Girls' volleyball won 15 of our last 18 games and also hosted their annual game in memory of former JP Stevens teacher, volleyball coach, and Edison High School alumni, Anthony White, and we crushed Edison High. Tomorrow will be Girls' Volleyball Senior Night against South River at 5:00 PM at JP Stevens, so make sure to come out and support. And on a further note, the girls' volleyball team were ranked fifth in the GMC. So to, thank you. Boys' soccer and girls' soccer have won six games this month, and girls' tennis won three out of their last four games. Lastly, I would like to announce that this year's homecoming theme is Enchanted Garden. Our Student Council is working hard to ensure that our homecoming will be truly magical, and we are looking forward to increasing our capacity to ensure as many students as possible can attend this high school milestone event. We are looking forward to homecoming and other events such as our annual talent show, JPS Got Talent, in the future. It is such a pleasure to be up here and representing JP, and thank you all for your time. Hawks fly high.
Well, thank you, Derek and Sanvi. Appreciate all your efforts. All right, next thing on the agenda is public comments on resolutions. Before we go over the list of people in the sign-in sheet, we have a tradition here to let the students go first. Some students did sign up, some may not have. The one who signed up is Lauren Jean, Lauren Jean. Oh, yeah, sorry. So I don't even read the disclaimer for public comments. Go ahead, Mr. Roth.
All right, pursuant to Board Policy 0167, now is the time for public comment on resolution items only. You have six minutes to discuss any items that are on the agenda for resolution and action by the board. There will be a second public comment. It is on the agenda for all general items. It is on the agenda for all general items. You also have six minutes for that time period. So I just request that you discuss any items that are on the agenda in this section. Any comments should not be profane, derogatory, political. State your business before the board. You have to have your name and address. The board will not permit participation without having your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Is there any Laurent Jean, Laurent Sean? So, all right. So, any other students in the audience? Last call, any students? Are you a student? Okay, you can go ahead, pronounce your, like the attorney said, pronounce your name and address. Yeah, okay. So before you go, do a motion to start public comments. Motion, may I have a motion for public comments on resolutions? Mr. Vishal Patel?
Motion.
Mr. Lugo, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, you can start.
Good evening, distinguished board members. My name is Gayatri Mathur, and I'm 17 years old. I'm a senior in high school, and I'm from the Glen Rock Public School District, and I identify as a lesbian. I am also of Indian origin. If you have been to India, you know that when you get stuck in traffic on a busy road, beggars of all ages come knocking on your car windows, asking you to buy their balloons, candy, fruits, and other trinkets. One particular day, I was with my cousin, aunt, and uncle when two transgender women approached our car to ask for donations. That was the first time I heard the word "hijra." By definition, hijra refers to a male identifying as female or neither sex. However, the way I heard it used that day made the word sound like an insult, and I was right about that. Society hasn't always frowned upon the LGBTQIA+ community as a whole. By frowned upon, I mean they have been ridiculed, beaten, and terrorized. For example, being transgender in India was actually seen as powerful when the Vedas, the oldest scripture in the world, were written. After many years of twisted religion, culture, and ongoing stigma, the trans and LGBTQ+ community faces constant threats from their own families and even sometimes, and sadly, themselves. Edison is a community with a large Indian population. My family had always told me that I was going to grow out of being gay as an Indian-identifying person. I was always afraid of telling my extended family, and I still am. Statistics show that only 15% of trans Indian children felt affirmed in their homes. The percentage is even lower than that in the overall community. The numbers also show that 39% of Indian LGBTQ individuals seriously considered suicide in the past year, and 20% of trans Indian LGBTQ kids attempted suicide in that same timeframe. Whether you agree with the concept of trans or gay doesn't matter. All children need to feel safe and comfortable, because that is their right. That being said, while we can't always change what happens in everyone's homes, we can ensure we set a positive example within the community. An integral part of the community is school. Whether they receive support at home or not, it is the school's job to provide them with that space. Therefore, I support the reinstatement of the Transgender Student Guidance Policy 5756, which was signed into New Jersey law in 2017. Thank you.
Any more students in the audience? All right, saying none. Steve, are you a student? Go ahead.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Reed Rodriguez. I'm a resident of Hackensack, New Jersey, and I use he/him pronouns. Tonight, I am speaking as an individual and on behalf of the transgender community.
Excuse me, we need your address also. Name and address, please.
300 Clayton Place.
Thank you.
Okay. Tonight, I am speaking as an individual and on behalf of the transgender community. I am here to share my experiences as a transgender masculine person. During March of 2020, the start of the pandemic, a war was waged inside my brain. I fought battles against myself regarding social and gender conformity. I wanted to forge my own path in this world, so I did. In seventh grade, I found myself advocating for name and gender change in school, and gender change in the school record system, a gender-neutral bathroom for students, and the creation of a Hackensack Middle School Gay-Straight Alliance. In October of 2020, the worst year of my frickin' life, as long as everybody else's, the efforts paid off. I co-founded what I learned, I co-founded what I learned was, I co-founded, and what I learned was, only the second middle school GSA in Bergen County was our club, a county that has over 70 municipalities. For these actions, I learned how to show pride in my self endeavors and how to become my most authentic self. The policy that you are considering rescinding today is not, if it wasn't in place at my middle school, I wouldn't have, would not have been, I wouldn't, sorry. I would not have had the basic freedoms that I did, like the ability to have teachers and students address me by my chosen pronouns and write to use a bathroom of my choice, the safe space where LGBTQ students and their allies could gather to speak and learn. I wouldn't have felt safe to explore my place with the LGBTQ fam, within the LGBTQ family. The safety gender, the safety gave me the ability to transform and embrace my gender. I am privileged enough to have a supportive family that lets me express myself in the way that I feel is right. However, not, New Jersey is a melting pot of different cultures and backgrounds, and not everyone is fortunate to have a family like mine. They keep their gender and sexuality hidden from friends, families, peers, for reasons of personal safety. If students are not offered these basic protections to be who they are, and it will result in the outing of students, the consequences will be increased bullying, extreme depression, homelessness, and/or suicide. And I will not bore you with the statistics, because I know someone else will go over this later in this meeting. Now, I have a question to ask the board, which I know I cannot ask the board an actual question, so this is a thought to land with you guys. Now, do you want to go down in history as the first district in New Jersey to revoke an eight-year-old policy protecting trans students? You know the students deserve better than that. Make the right choice and support your LGBTQ students. I support Policy 5756.
Next is Stephen Takach. Stephen Takach.
Do I have to state my name and address?
Yes, please. We have it here, but you can just mention.
Stephen Takach, 62 Roosevelt Boulevard. And I'd also like to mention that I'm an alumni here, graduated in 2017. Good evening to the board. I would like to address both the board's impromptu vote to repeal Policy 5756 at the last board meeting, and I suppose line item 7A tonight. First, I would like to address what the policy does. Despite the obfuscatory framing presented at the last meeting, being one of potential rights, or parental rights, to be contacted by the school, this policy does much more, which I'm assuming will be mentioned by others. It mandates that students be allowed to use the restrooms, locker rooms, and changing rooms in accordance with their gender identity. It mandates that schools allow students to participate in school activities with their gender identity. Most importantly, it mandates correct gendering and chosen name usage for students. I watched all of the last meeting, and none of these parts of the policy were addressed. Only the possibility of telling parents about what their child chooses to share about themselves at school. Rather than leave this policy in place, which states these positions outright, you all have chosen to leave it to, in the words of the board attorney when asked about legal consequences by Board Member Romano, quote, "The court's theory that there is already an LAD policy in place," unquote, but also that it, quote, "all depends on the judge you get." The board is flying in the dark about the repercussions of this repeal. Regarding that, I want to understand where the board comes from on this issue. I'm willing to believe that every one of you on stage and all of you in the audience would try your absolute hardest to support your children if they were questioning their assigned gender identity. But quite frankly, Policy 5756 is not about you, the supportive parent. It is about protecting those most vulnerable from harm. The policy is simple harm reduction. Would I like to live in a world where every child has no fear of abuse, be that emotional abuse, being unhoused, or, God forbid, physical violence? I would, and I would assume that the rest of you would, too. Sadly, we don't live in that world. We live in a world where children are abused by their family members for their identities, and in a world where children will hide things from their parents for fear of retribution. Are their fears unfounded? In many cases, I'd have to assume so. I and most people in this hall can probably say they hid things from their parents out of fear, and that the fears were overreactions and unfounded. But there are children who are not overreacting. Their fears are grounded in reality, and if the repeal of this policy leaves confusion around what should be done regarding parental notification, or if the repeal of this policy is followed by a replacement policy of mandatory informing, then these children will be harmed. I may not be a parent myself, but I fully understand that it is uncomfortable being, quote-unquote, "left in the dark." But this policy and policies like it are a shield for students who may be directly harmed, and even one child harmed by the ill-advised repeal of this policy is one child too many. Lastly, I want to address the board on its own conduct. Last meeting's repeal was made without placement on the agenda, nor any public comment held until after the motion was put to a vote. I am very concerned with the board's decision to circumvent public notification and discussion from either side. I assume I have made my position on Policy 5756 quite clear, but even those who disagree with me were not made available the knowledge of the vote, nor the ability to advocate for their position in front of the board prior to the vote. Not only am I aghast at the board's actions, but those who want the policy repealed should be too. For your ability to know what is going on and speak your mind was stifled. For all these reasons, I respectfully request that all board members who voted in favor of the repeal of Policy 5756, that being Vishal Patel, Shannon Pang, and Jonna Patel, Christopher Lugo, and Board President Brol Patel, Brol, my apologies, publicly apologize for attempting to circumvent our ability to be forewarned on the agenda or publicly discuss these matters, and furthermore, resign their positions at the Edison Board of Education, not only for moving us towards a school district that is, in my view, more intolerant, not just for endangering some of the most vulnerable children in this district, not just for potentially leaving our school faculty in the wind legally, but also for attempting to sneak this by the public in an attempt to avoid the public outcry and debate that has occurred in other school districts around the state. You have shown yourselves at best as people who care more for dogmatic entitlement of parents to intrude upon and control their children's lives, rather than working to ensure that the most vulnerable children of this town are safe. And at worst, as people who would use the children of this town as a political football. Thank you.
Next is Laura. Laura from Montclair.
Hello. My name is Laura Hoag. My address is 42 Brookfield Road in Montclair, New Jersey. I'm a gender specialist, psychotherapist, with extensive experience working with and supporting trans and gender diverse youth. I want to first start by saying that I am shocked and not surprised that this decision seems to have been made without the input of trans folks themselves or with specialists who work with trans folks who can help you to decipher the pseudoscience, misinformation, and disinformation that is being proliferated politically right now and impacting students right here in New Jersey, students who have names, who have families, and who have to suffer the repercussions of the decisions that have been made. The proposal to repeal protections for trans students not only jeopardizes their well-being, but it also disregards established findings within psychological and educational research. Numerous studies have demonstrated that when trans youth experience supportive environments, they show significantly lower rates of anxiety, depression, and suicidality. That is not hyperbole, that is not exaggeration, that is reality. I see it every day. Schools that foster inclusivity contribute positively to mental health and educational engagement for trans youth. Policy 5756 helps to create such an environment, and repealing it would erode essential protections, leaving trans and non-binary youth without the support they need, and in some cases, out them to unaffirming home environments. I cannot underestimate the significant damage this does, this causes to young people. The suicide statistics are not just numbers for me. Young people are dying. They have names, they have families, they have people who mourn them. It is always devastating, and it is almost always preventable. I strongly urge this board to uphold Policy 5756. Allowing it to remain intact would affirm your commitment to evidence-based practices and provide all students with the equitable, inclusive environment they deserve and the one that you have promised to provide to all students. And I do want to say, I've been to a lot of board meetings. I show up in a lot of rooms where these kinds of things happen. And I want to get in front of what I usually hear, which is, we respect all children. We care about all of our students. Because that's words, those aren't actions. And without policies to back up that statement, you do not respect trans students. You do not care for them.
Louis Walpin? Louis Walpin?
I'm sorry, can I, can we switch? I am number five. My babysitter.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, distinguished board members. My name is Radhika Sehgal, actually, Dr. Radhika Sehgal. I go by Krish, my students call me Dr. Krish. I am a clinical psychologist. I live in Highland Park, New Jersey, and I work at Rutgers University. So for all the people here who are residents of Edison, if your child does not get into an Ivy League, which is the aspiration of every New Jersey parent, it seems, your child will be coming to Rutgers. Yes. And if your child is Indian, some of them will want to see an Indian therapist. And I am one of two. Okay? Actually, I'm the only one there. And some of your children will not want to see me, because as one of them said to me after I told her to do some puja, she said, "You sound like my mother." Right? So anyhow, I am a clinical psychologist, and I have been working with college students for 20 years or more. I work with students from Edison High School also, who attend Rutgers. And I am always struck by the resiliency of these students, right? They are a joy to work with. And often, when I sit with them, I think, how have you survived what you have survived, right? You give me hope for the future. I want to disclose something personal. I am an immigrant, I am Desi, I am Asian, I am a parent, a single parent, and a member of the queer community. Okay? That informs everything I do. Now, before folks say, "Well, of course, you're going to support any kid who comes out." Because when I came out, my mother said, "Well, you're going to a therapist. Of course, your therapist is going to support you," right? That's not how therapy works, for those who are misinformed. We don't have an agenda. I do not get a toaster oven, some will get this reference, which shows how old I am. I do not get a toaster oven for having a child come out as gay. Okay? I do not get anything. I do get to see someone live their life authentically, with joy and with pride. Okay? So, having said that, when a student comes into my therapy room, into my office, the way I work with them is to also help them gain an understanding of their parents and their parents' value system. If they're the child of immigrants, I help them understand that their parents left their home country not just for themselves, but to give their children a better future. And that understanding is really essential, especially for the children of immigrants, because the gap is really wide. So, I also help them situate their parents within the context of community. So, I also help them situate their parents within the context of communities that may be judgmental but are essential for an immigrant’s survival in this country. I think you all know what I’m talking about, okay? And I remind them that their parents, for the most part, want them to be happy, get a good job, and provide them with lots of grandchildren, right? And that grandchildren are possible, even if you’re a member of the LGBTQ community. Case in point, I have a child, right? I’m not going to give you statistics, but I will tell you some stories. What happens when a parent finds out that their child is transgender? I have students who were physically, emotionally, and this is a trigger warning, please, who were physically, emotionally, and sexually abused by their parents upon finding that the child is transgender. It pains me to say these words out loud. You might think that this is not the kind of parent you are, or these are not the kind of parents who are there in Edison School District. But parents are everywhere. Parents who abuse their children if their child does not fit a narrow definition of what that child should be. This physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, financial manipulation of the child, “Do what we say, otherwise we will kick you out, or we will not pay for your college,” leads to suicidal ideation, self-harming behavior, a lifetime of depression and anxiety. And I can go on and on. I’m not saying this is all parents, but even if it is one parent, it is one parent too many. Eventually, for their own survival, your child will go to college and file for financial emancipation from you, and will block off all connection. You will lose your child, and your child will lose you. Remember that. This is a loss that goes both ways. It damages and breaks families. How does this policy change that you push through, keep children safe? How does it help parents know that their child cannot trust anyone at school, that there is no safe space for them anywhere in this world? Sometimes schools are literally the only safe spaces for children. If the goal of this policy is to keep children safe and to not have secrets from you, the parents, let’s talk about that. How can you be the kind of parents who a child will trust to come and say, “Hey, Mom, Dad, I’m trans. Hey, Mom, Dad, I’m gay.” What do you need to do as parents? What do you need to do differently, instead of relying on the school district and for teachers to break confidences? Do you know how many students I work with who desperately want their parents to love them and care for them and talk to them about this? Your mission statement is to provide a safe, supportive learning environment. How does this policy do that? This policy change, okay? And this mission statement applies to all students, even trans students. So even if one child is harmed or bullied or abused, that is one child too many.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Louise Walpin, and I live in South Brunswick. I’ll be reading a letter today from Dr. Connie.
Audience, please. Our policy requires, as I’ve said before, the name and address. We’re allowed to ask it, part of our rules, and we just ask for the name and address.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, Policy 167 says I just have to give my municipality of residence, and I’m really not comfortable giving a full address when it’s being recorded by someone.
Sorry, go ahead. You can go ahead.
So, given that, I’d appreciate my time being restarted, and so that I can start and just give you a South Brunswick address.
I’ll give you 25 more seconds. Get started now.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Louise Walpin, and I’m from South Brunswick. I will actually be reading a letter from Dr. Connie Ilengoven, who practices in Princeton, New Jersey, and has seen many children from Edison, New Jersey. Esteemed Board of Education members, as a South Asian American Board-certified child, adolescent, and adult psychiatrist, I want to urgently reach out to you to recommend that you retain Transgender Student Guidance Policy 5756. This guidance protects the lives of trans students. Outing these students can cause severe harm. Our world is very homophobic and transphobic. We want schools to be a safe place for our kids. Coming out is a very sensitive, private, and individual process. It takes time to come to terms with one’s identity, much less telling others in the community about your identity. To take that choice away from trans students in a community where they will most likely face stigma, discrimination, and possibly abuse is inhumane and dangerous. These students know the people in their lives, their views, and whether it’s safe to tell them or not. This school should not be taking their autonomy and decision-making power from these students. If the students know it’s going to hurt their family life, or that they are going to get abused because of their identities, schools should listen to the students and protect their confidentiality. In my profession, I treat trans individuals, and most of them have had unsupportive family members, and some of them have even become homeless after telling their families. Unfortunately, our culture needs a lot of education about LGBTQ identities. I feel for their students, who are so afraid to tell their parents even if they desperately want to. For the school to do it without their consent is unnecessarily harmful and dangerous. Students should be able to tell others about their sexual and gender identity on their own timeline, not anyone else’s. According to the Trevor Project’s report on the mental health and well-being of Asian-American and Pacific Islanders, AAPI, LGBTQ youth, only 15% of Indian LGBTQ kids report access to affirming spaces in their homes. That’s 15, 15%,. Only 10% of Indian LGBTQ kids report access to affirming spaces in their communities. This is a really vulnerable population. 39% of Indian LGBTQ kids have actually seriously considered suicide in the past year, and 20% of trans Indian LGBTQ kids actually attempted suicide in the past year. 50% of these kids have self-harmed in the past year. These behaviors are highly correlated to a lack of acceptance from their family, friends, and community. If the school is outing these students, they are increasing the likelihood of self-harm and suicidality. This school should be a safe place for them, and instead is throwing these students into the fire if you repeal 5756. Our kids are kids only once. We want to protect them the best that we can. Please retain Transgender Student Policy 5756. Thank you sincerely, Connie Ilengoven, Board-certified Child, Adolescent, and Adult Psychiatrist.
Thank you. After this, it will be Mrs. Conway. I know you’ll be ready. I’m just trying to make people ready. Go ahead, Ms. Shapiro.
All right. I’m Marsha Shapiro, and I’m reading a letter from Kea. I live in South Brunswick. Dear Edison School Board members, my name is Kea. I am an Indian-American Edison resident, and I vote in every election. I graduated from Edison High School in 2010 and was part of the school’s Gay-Straight Alliance. Being a part of that group opened my eyes to the struggles my friends and classmates faced just to feel safe and accepted. Many of them were scared to be themselves, worried that coming out would change everything: the way their families treated them, how their friends would react, and if they loved, and if they would be ostracized by the people they loved and grew up with. My classmates spent their days hiding pieces of who they were, afraid of being outed. I remember thinking that they were so quiet, not knowing much about them besides their names. But when they came to our club after school, they were accepted for who they were and beamed with personality. I learned that some of them were funny, some were great athletes, one could bake a black forest cake from scratch, and another could do a spot-on Alec Baldwin impression. It showed me how important it is for adolescents to have spaces where they don’t have to hide who they are, especially when they’re still figuring out who they are. That’s why I’m so disappointed to see the direction this school board is taking with the decision to repeal Policy 5756. It’s a step backward without real regard for the privacy and agency of the students this policy was meant to support. We have reached so many milestones in LGBTQ+ rights over the past years that some of us don’t remember how harsh the environment was 15 years ago. It’s a slippery slope, and we cannot go back to stifling our students. If a child is afraid to share information about themselves, that’s a sign that parents need to work on being safe people to open up to. If your child is afraid to talk to you, consider the actions you may have taken to make them feel so scared. If your child does not trust you with information about themselves, consider how you have broken their trust and how to rebuild it. You may be able to force compliance by repealing Policy 5756, but at what cost? Will your child want to spend the holidays with you upon reaching adulthood? You can’t use the school to strong-arm a healthy relationship. It’s not the school’s role to force a child to reveal private information that they aren’t ready to share. This decision to repeal Policy 5756 sends the wrong message about respect and trust. I hope the board rethinks this choice and puts the well-being of all students first by restoring these protections. Every student deserves to feel safe, supported, and respected, and I trust that this board will help us create this environment in our schools. I will be proud to vote for those who support Policy 5756 in the future. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mrs. Conway. Next will be Sheri Race.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle, Edison, New Jersey, 08820. Sorry. I don’t know. I’m Elizabeth Conway, though, and that’s who we called.
No, you’ll be next. I’m just announcing the next speaker’s name, so you can stay ready if you’re somewhere in the crowd.
That’s okay. I know I’m mixed up in another item tonight, but I signed in when I came, so I know I’m next, and I wanted to make sure I had a chance to speak. But I am going to change the subject because I feel that there’s a really important item that I would like to expand upon that the board has neglected to share with the public on a regular basis. And we are spending quite a bit of money on our expansion, and many schools are under construction, and I see we’re moving in the right direction. But as a taxpayer in this district, I would like to know on a regular basis how everything is going. I do look at the change orders, and I see we’re spending a lot more money than initially we thought of, but I would like to know, for instance, I drive by John Adams, and I see that the building is completely enclosed, but that doesn’t tell me, is John Adams actually opened for students? And what’s the process going on at JP Stevens, which is a major adjustment to our district? So, I’d like to make a suggestion, and you can take it for what you want. I would like to see maybe, sorry, Mr. Toth, and maybe Mr. Kalabas make a periodic, where is he? Okay, okay. If the two of you could come together between money and building and give us a periodic, monthly update as to what’s going on with the school and what’s going on with the improvements to our district. I know you’re very busy, you have your work to do as the BA, and I know Mr. Kalabas is very busy with the buildings and grounds and his employees, but I think I would appreciate it, even if it’s only a 10-minute update each month at the action meeting, as to what’s going on in our district, so people realize this is where my money is going and I’m happy. Right now, all I’m seeing is an adjustment and change orders. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Race.
Hello, friends. I live in Edison. I have had a mortgage here for more than 25 years. Sheri Race. Thought I said that. Okay. Hello, all. I’m here today because I was born in the last millennium. 5756 is really meaningful to me because my pronouns are she, they. I spent almost my entire life, and I’m a person who really likes words, waiting for the words gender and non-conforming to come together. So as someone who identifies as she, they, who has been misgendered from the time I was a small child, I knew that to protect myself in the environment of the last millennium, I couldn’t be fully who I was in junior high. I saw what happened in junior high to people who were not the same as everyone else. I went to three different high schools. Each of those high schools had the same policy toward people who were different. When I went to college and I came out when I was almost 19 years old, I couldn’t be out to anyone but myself because of the environment that there was. So I have spent the most recent 40 years of my life working to make the world a better place, not just for LGBTQIA+ people, for all people. A rising tide raises all ships, and you can imagine my chagrin when you ushered through a change that would endanger children, endanger children whose only choice is to be their authentic self. Now, if you’re an accountant, and your partner’s a lawyer, and your child doesn’t want to be an accountant or a lawyer, sure, you’re disappointed, but you get over it. This is something that can affect the entire life of that person that you brought into the world or whose care you’re responsible for. So with that in mind, I want to leave you with this quote from Maya Angelou. “Do the best you can until you know better. Then, when you know better, do better.” And that’s what I’m asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Baker, you are next. Ma’am, she is next, Sona Baker.
Oh, okay. I will sit here. Thank you. Hello. My name is Sona Baker, and I live in Edison on Grandview Avenue. I am also Indian-American, and I also have a son who attends James Monroe Elementary School, and I have a daughter who will attend Edison Public Schools in a few years when she’s old enough. So this issue is very personal to me, as my kids may be very directly impacted. And I am here today to speak because I think it is really just awful that Policy 5756 is on the table to be repealed. This policy makes our kids and our schools and our communities safer. All of our kids deserve a safe space to be heard and be seen as themselves. Of course, and I think this is probably shared by all parents, I hope that my children will feel that they can talk to me about anything and know that I will love them no matter what, but I also know that I am their parent, I am their mother. It is normal for kids to not want to tell their parents everything right away. If they are struggling with identity or any... or any other concerns that they aren't ready or simply don't want to bring to me right away, I absolutely want them to have a safe space or a safe adult that they can talk to at school to get the guidance that they need. And whether you, be it the members of the board or other parents in our community, like it or not, kids, including AAPI youth, struggle with identity. Folks before me have shared statistics. I won't repeat them. But these fears, particularly when children feel alone, can lead to concerning outcomes like thoughts or actions of self-harm. I want my kids, who attend Edison Public Schools, to know that they have someone that they can speak to immediately without fear. For my kids, when they are ready, I will absolutely be here for them. I will love them in any identity. But I would never, ever want to force them to tell me something before they are ready or force them to be outed by a school counselor. If our kids are scared that something that they tell somebody at school will be shared with their parents without their consent, it is basic common sense that they will not share those things, and they are less likely to ask for help. I very deeply want my kids and all of our kids to have the space, the safe space to turn to if they don't feel ready or able to talk to their parents. This policy has been in place for years now, and I am very, very sad and disappointed to see it come up now in what, to me, seems like a very purely political, fear-mongering way by folks to gain votes without any regards for the long-term impact and effects and harm that this will have on our children. I grew up in New Jersey, visiting Oak Tree Road for Indian groceries and Indian food like every weekend. And I moved here eight years ago, specifically because I wanted my kids to grow up surrounded by the diversity of people here in Edison. This policy helps hold all of those very beautiful, very diverse people safe. Parents do not have rights when it comes to our kids. We have responsibilities, and that includes keeping all of them safe in our community to flourish and thrive as their whole selves. As one of the largest towns in New Jersey, Edison sets an example and a precedent for other townships. So I really, truly, from the bottom of my heart, hope that Edison keeps this policy in place to continue caring for our kids. Thank you.
Ma'am, since you have a small baby, we'll let you go. Just let us know your name and address so I can check you off the list.
Rebecca Tarby, Edgewood Road in Edison.
Okay, you are not far away, though, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said my name. I apologize. Hello, President Patel, Dr. Alderelli, and the board. My name is Rebecca Tarby, and as a proud graduate of JP Stevens, current Edison resident, mother of future students of Edison Public Schools, and a current Edison educator, I know I am so lucky to have had parents, teachers, and mentors who instilled in me the importance of listening to those who are disenfranchised and discriminated against by the systems and policies that govern us and who taught me to stand up for the most vulnerable among us. Our trans and gender nonconforming youth are some of the most vulnerable members of our school system. And trans folks all around the country and the world are telling us what they and trans youth need. They need a policy such as the Transgender Student Guidance Policy 5756. I heard, I listened, and I will not be silent as I stand by our most vulnerable. If our teachers and administrators are forced by board policy to disclose and forcibly out students' gender identity and name preference to unsupportive parents and guardians, we may be condemning the students to the tangible and real risk of homelessness, financial abandonment, physical and mental abuse, the psychological trauma of conversion therapy, and even to self-harm and suicide. We may not think this is possible here in our town, but these atrocities have happened in all corners of our country and beyond. I learned through this district's wonderful professional development to meet students where they are, develop strong relationships, and the neurological reasons to make sure students feel safe and seen in our classrooms before meaningful learning can occur. If students are unable to be their authentic selves in our classrooms because they do not have supportive adults at home, and teachers may be forced to out them to their parents or guardians, they will not learn to their full potential, and their education will suffer. Members of the board, I implore you to either restore Policy 5756 or create a new trans-supportive policy which will respect the discretion of teachers, administrators, mental health professionals, counselors, and trans and gender nonconforming youth themselves to determine if sharing a student's preferred pronouns and name is safe. Our students' mental, psychological, and physical safety is at grave risk, and I will not be silent in my support for our district's most vulnerable students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Aruna Rao.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Aruna Rao. I live in Edison. I'm not going to provide my address because there is a masked individual who's been filming here since we all arrived. He's also made some threatening statements that are transphobic, homophobic, racist, xenophobic. And I would ask that why you allow children to be present here and have this individual continue to film and endanger their safety? So I just wanted to begin with that. So I'm here today because I want to express my very strong support for retaining Policy 5756. It protects transgender students in Edison schools from being outed as transgender without their consent. I, as I mentioned, live in Edison. I've been living here for 25 years. I'm a parent who raised my transgender child, Leo Shanti Hegde, in Edison. Leo attended public schools in Edison from first grade through high school, and he graduated from JP Stevens High School. Leo did not come out to me as transgender when he was in school because of the pervasive transphobia which surrounded him and which continues to surround many of the trans students in this town. He believed that he was the only Indian-American child from Edison who was transgender, and he feared that he would be punished for his trans identity by his parents if he ever came out to them through denial of funding, perhaps anger, shaming. My husband Krishna and I were loving, supportive parents, but despite our best intentions, we were completely ignorant about transgender identity. And we mistakenly expressed sentiments and thoughts that made Leo think that being transgender was just inherently wrong. The idea of having a transgender child was so outside my experience that I did not know how to create an affirming atmosphere that provided support for a transgender child. I have a lot of regret that my child had to live in fear for so many years and feel alone because he didn't have the support and understanding he should have had at home with his peers, with his community. While I really wish that I had known and been able to support him, I completely understand that he was protecting himself. By coming out to his family only when he was ready, he was able to maintain his agency, and that's resulted in a strong and loving, supportive family relationship that we have with him now when he has grown into a strong and capable adult. It was only after Leo came out as transgender in college that I began my education and learning, which resulted in my becoming an advocate for all LGBTQI children and adults and an activist working with South Asian families of LGBTQI children. I founded, and I'm currently the executive director of Desi Rainbow Parents and Allies, a national nonprofit organization that provides support, education, and advocacy for South Asian LGBTQ community members and their families. Desi Rainbow has served over 2,000 people with direct support since its founding in 2020 and reached thousands with our outreach and communication. You can learn more about us at desirainbow.org. I was really shocked when I found out that the Edison Board of Education intends to abolish Policy 5756. I hear a lot of talk from current board members and from candidates for the board about parental rights. As Sona Baker just pointed out, what about parental responsibilities? No one is disputing a parent's right to support, love, and provide guidance to their child. Nothing in this Policy 5756 prevents school staff from informing people, from informing parents about their child's gender identity with the child's consent. In the vast majority of situations, parents can be very involved and supportive. What I'm really concerned about is that there are some transgender children who live in unsupportive homes, and their mental health and safety is in danger if they're outed. We should not force school staff to knowingly put these children in danger and violate the trust that they build with their students. We all want to keep children safe and must acknowledge that not all children live in homes where healthy communication happens. And some transgender children are afraid of getting kicked out of their homes, beaten, subjected to illegal conversion therapy, or even worse. In the course of my work with Desi Rainbow, I have come across all these instances of things like this happening to trans kids and seen the impact that it has on them as they grow into adulthood. The data about mental health and suicide risks have been repeated over and over again, but I will repeat it again. According to the CDC, approximately 26% of transgender and questioning students attempted suicide in the last year. According to a report on AAPI LGBTQ+ mental health by the Trevor Project, 40% of AAPI LGBTQ youth seriously considered suicide in the past year, including 50% of AAPI transgender and non-binary youth. More than half of AAPI LGBTQ youth report that someone attempted to convince them to change their sexual orientation or gender identity. The best way for a child to talk to parents about their gender identity or any other issues that are difficult to discuss is to create an open and affirming space in your family, community, and school. Allowing misinformation and prejudice into your home will make your child fearful about coming out to you. I ask the board to educate yourselves about the social and cultural pressures these transgender children are under before you consider abolishing a policy that protects them from harm. I would be glad to support this education process. Let's put our focus back on important issues to ensure that every child has access to a high-quality education and the mental health resources they need rather than removing protections for transgender students. I also just wanted to end by saying Happy Diwali to everybody who's going to be celebrating this week and to note that Diwali focuses on the light of knowledge, which erases the darkness of ignorance. And that's what I hope happens this Diwali.
Next is Kamli Segal. Kamli Segal from Edison. Karen, okay. It's okay. And the next one will be Seen Bietzle from Hillsboro, after this.
It's my own fault. My handwriting is awful. My name is Karen Segal, and I live in Edison. I don't have children. I'm not Indian. I'm not gay. I'm not trans. But I believe in the safety of our children, and I am appalled that my tax dollars are being spent by people who don't follow their own rules and did not make the first vote public or allow public comment. I am appalled. I am also appalled that you would place vulnerable children in danger. And, you know, many people have said it better than I can. But, you know, you're going to have to live with yourselves if you out a child and that child is killed or that child suicides. It's on you. If you do that and that child dies, you have not protected that child. And I saw your mission statement, an open, accepting, psychologically and socially embracing environment. That's not created by removing protections from these children and outing them to their parents without their consent.
Next is Seen Bietzle. And after this will be CJ Giovingo.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sean Bensley. I live in Hillsborough in Somerset County, and I too will not give my address. And I'm quite appalled by the fact that you're allowing someone who's wearing a mask that is clearly not for medical reasons to tape or videotape this meeting. I know we can't take away that right, but a lot of these videos and photos end up on social media, and people are harassed and intimidated because of it. I'm here tonight to support transgender students and their families. I'm a retired mental health professional with over 30 years of experience working with kids and families. I worked in Old Bridge Public Schools for 20 years as an elementary school counselor, and before that, for about 13 years in different mental health settings. Policy 5756 has become a hot topic, and there's a lot of disinformation floating around. Instead of having civil discussions about a highly complex issue, some choose to stoke fear and pit people against each other by claiming that school staff are keeping secrets from parents, which isn't true. Unfortunately, some districts have overturned 5756. I have yet to hear, though, any specific examples from those districts of incidents stemming from the policy. And I wonder why this board is considering it. Was there an incident? Or more likely, what I have seen is politically-driven agenda to overturn the policy, particularly by groups such as Moms for Liberty and the New Jersey Project, both of which have been designated as anti-government hate groups by the Southern Poverty Law Center. 5756 was designed to protect those vulnerable students who need it, not to usurp parents' rights. Most children will never need such protection, thankfully, but some might. Kids are highly perceptive and know much more about themselves and others than we adults give them credit for. Many transgender and other LGBTQ+ kids, like straight kids, realize who they are before graduating from high school, some as early as elementary school. And having been an elementary counselor, I know that for a fact. In my experience, when students share something deeply personal with an adult at school, it's usually the child's decision to do so because they trust that person, not because the adult is trying to seek out information to hide from parents. I don't know anyone that I worked with that did that. Many want to tell their parents but aren't sure how, or they fear they'll upset the adults at home. Others simply aren't ready. Most will eventually tell their parents, either on their own or sometimes with the help and support of a trusted adult. For a small minority, telling caregivers that they are anything other than straight and cisgender could result in dire consequences, some of which have been pointed out by other speakers tonight. Sadly, not all students live in nurturing homes, and we can't assume that all kids have someone to safely confide in. Ask any of us who have worked with kids so closely as I have Ask any of us who have worked with kids so closely as I have to tell you stories of kids that broke your heart. We all have them. As a member of the LGBTQ community myself, I can relate to the anxiety and hesitation a student may feel when considering coming out. I'm so impressed with by the young people here tonight who have come here to speak because at my age or at that age, when I was their age, I could never have done that. I myself grew up here in Edison in the late 60s and 70s and early 80s. I attended Stelton Thomas Jefferson and I graduated from here at Edison High in 1982. When I was younger, Edison lacked the rich and wonderful diversity that we now see here. The world then was also a much less accepting place for LGBTQ plus people and I didn't come out until I was 31 years old. That's way too long. I see it as progress that most people, including young people, no longer wait that long because it's now somewhat safer for people to be who they are. There remains, though, a significant amount of misunderstanding and prejudice, which I believe has resulted in opposition to 5756 as well as efforts to ban books and prevent the teaching about LGBTQ plus history. There's also been an increase in threats and intimidation as exemplified by our young masked man here tonight who is taking video. And again, I'm appalled that you're allowing that. There's also been actual violence toward people in our community and some of these videos that he's taken are used to incite that. I ask the board to retain policy 5756 and to protect vulnerable marginalized transgender students, whether it's 20 students, five, or just one. Kids' lives are much more important than political or personal agendas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. CJ Giovingo.
Thank you for your time. My name is CJ Giovingo. I use they/them pronouns. I live in Metatchin, New Jersey. I'm with Outfront Metatchin, a community-driven nonprofit that's devoted to advancing inclusivity and equality for LGBTQIA+ people through programs and initiatives. We envision a world where Q-plus youth are empowered agents of sustainable, inclusive, and intersectional change. I'm honored to be reading a letter on behalf of an Edison student alum who wished to remain Dear members of the Edison Board of Education, I have been made aware that there has been a preliminary vote to repeal policy 5756, which protects transgender students' gender identities and privacy. Please reconsider this decision. I am a non-binary Indian person who went through the Edison School System. While I was too afraid to join any clubs for LGBTQIA+ students, I was still fortunate enough to have queer and transgender friends and classmates who validated my identity. School was my safe place to explore my gender, something I had been exploring since I was two to three years old, mind you. I am 24 now and my parents still do not know I am non-binary because I know my safety will be compromised. They have expressed transphobic views before, saying trans and non-binary people are confused or other people can be trans but not my kids. This terrifies me. My heart shatters every time I am reminded that my own parents would most definitely shame me and undermine my autonomy, stating things like, "What will other people say?" or "Why can't you just be normal?" They have said this about other queer kids and they have even hinted the same with me. Parents do not get to control their kids as if they are a direct extension of themselves. Kids are their own individuals with their own opinions, values, and identities. Feeling entitled to breaching a child's privacy, demanding that they share every little detail about themselves with their parents is unfair and dangerous. Giving parents the green light to force their children into arbitrary social compliance is unfair and dangerous, especially with transphobic parents who claim they just want to uphold traditional values. By repealing this policy, you are putting so many children in danger. Being transgender is not some abhorrent crime or moral failure. Being transgender is simply being human. And transgender people, including trans children, deserve the right to privacy and safety. I would not be here today without the support and privacy I had in my school years. I want the students after me to have this same safe environment to be themselves. This is the bare minimum that they deserve. You want Edison students to succeed? You want Edison Township to be a wonderful place to raise kids? Then make Edison Schools a safe space for all kids, including those who are queer and transgender. Let us thrive and be respected for who we are as a whole. Being transgender is merely one aspect of a complex, wonderful person. It is not something to be ashamed of. We are not confused. We are sure of ourselves and proud. And we are not silent. Please do the right thing and vote to keep policy 5756. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Larissa Garcia. Next one after this will be Jolly Lal.
Larissa Garcia, North Brunswick. Good evening and thank you for hearing this testimony given on behalf of Lauren Albrecht from Garden State Equality's Director of Advocacy. A previously scheduled meeting prevents me from attending in person and I'm grateful for the opportunity to share some information with you on behalf of Garden State Equality. For those of you who are not familiar, Garden State Equality is New Jersey's largest statewide LGBTQ rights organization and we are in our 20th year. We have a longstanding history of successfully working with legislators from all parties on all sides of issues relevant to our LGBTQ community. Our staff and our membership are parents, educators, doctors, lawyers, social workers, and homemakers. We are from all over the state, from all religions, races, ethnicities, and socioeconomic backgrounds. There are two things that bind us together. The understanding that LGBTQ rights are basic human rights and for most of us, the shared experience of having been at some time LGBTQ students in a public school. For those of you unsure of what that means, LGBTQ people as a whole make up 6% to 12% of the total population. It's hard to get a read on that exact number, though, because self-reporting often results in a loss of family, employment, religious affiliations, and other community ties. Of the total population, perhaps 2% to 3% identify as trans and non-binary. A correlating statistic, however, is much more relevant to this situation. Of all homeless youth, 40% identify as LGBTQ. For a population that only exists as less than 12% of the total population, the disproportionate amount of homelessness of that our youth... One more time. The disproportionate amount of homelessness of our youth speaks for itself. Kids don't want to be turned out from their homes and away from parents and no child wants to be homeless. Please note that many of the people who will advocate for the keeping of this policy are trans people and the actual parents of trans children and largely the people advocating for removing it are not transgender people, nor are they the parents of trans kids. In short, the small but vocal fraction demanding removal of this policy will never have been affected by it in any way. The fact time tells you all you need to know and it's highly disturbing to see this Board of Education using this issue, one that will only affect a very small portion of students, as a tool of fear-mongering on the backs of trans kids for political gain. This guidance was voluntarily adopted in 2019 by school boards across the state and has no reported negative impact. One more time, this guidance was voluntarily adopted in 2019 by school boards across the state and has no reported negative effect. The guidance was written by experts and actual transgender and non-binary people and accounted for facts and statistics about the safest environment for trans kids to come out in. You may hear soundbites about the mental health of LGBTQ youth and it's critical to place them in context. Being a LGBTQ person at face value does not mean you are more likely to be depressed or suicidal. We see increased rates of self-harm and suicidal ideation and the need for mental health support in situations where the LGBTQ student has been shamed, ostracized, harmed, alienated, punished, or removed from their home. I would ask why any person in the room, what situation in the home would lead any student to be uncomfortable telling their parent or guardian that they are trans or non-binary? When the argument is made by parents' rights activists that they need to know if their child is trans so they can quote-unquote "get them help," LGBTQ people are too familiar with what kind of quote-unquote "help" that is. The biggest help anyone can offer anyone else is to know that they are safe and that they are affirmed no matter what. And that starts long before you put a teacher in the position of having to out a student. If you already provide that kind of support, you'll never have to worry either way. And it is very unlikely that many of the... It is very likely that many of the families in the room already provide that kind of environment, but unfortunately, not every student has that. The data are very clear and any situation that could potentially result in a student being outed in an unsafe environment is very, very bad for that student. And what will happen if this policy is removed here tonight, knowing that they could potentially be outed by school staff, is that they will tell no one. There is no other agenda at play here on the part of LGBTQ advocates than doing everything possible to ensure that LGBTQ kids do not continue to be more likely to experience homelessness and attempted suicide. And that's it. That's all. And the guidance driving that is substantiated by data and the real-life experience of a majority of actual trans and non-binary people and not by the hysteria or political agendas. Please consider this in your vote and if you need more education or information, ask for it. There is no shame in not understanding something and there is no shame in asking questions, but there is shame in playing politics with our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jolly.
My name is Jolly Lal. I'm from Montgomery. I am originally from India. I am here as a strong supporter of everyone who believe in individual freedom, their own body autonomy, and make decisions for themselves. I am reading a letter on behalf of Sai Natkarni, who is a former student of JP Stevens, class of 2018. I'm honored to read the letter for Sai. Dear Board of Education Members, I am writing this letter as a queer person who grew up in Edison and graduated from JP Stevens High School. I graduated in 2018 and even though that was just a few years ago, the culture around being queer felt very different. I was rat with confusion and I expected intolerance at every juncture. I was so, so lucky to have been widely met with acceptance and understanding from the people I felt safe telling at that time. However, these people did not include my parents. I, like so many other first-generation children of immigrants, was extremely worried at the reaction my parents would have. I did everything in my power to keep my queerness a secret from them. It took me five years and several important but difficult conversations to finally tell my parents. Once again, I was incredibly lucky to have been met with love and acceptance. This is not a universal experience. I am not sure if it is even a common one. I don't know what I would have done if the teachers or school staff I trusted to tell were forced to disclose this information to my parents. The stress of being a teenager and doing well in school was substantial. The stress of being a teenager grappling with your own sexuality and gender expression was immense without the threat of rejection from my family. Trans and gender expansive children go through enough as it is. The confusion of having to figure out who you are outside of every normative structure is intense. They deserve any and every opportunity to feel safe during this journey, especially if that safety is not guaranteed at home. If you are concerned with the safety and well-being of children in Edison, I urge you to reconsider your decision to repeal policy 5756. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Sai Natkarni, JPS Class of 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anonymous. Anonymous, yes.
Hello, since 2019, I never gave my name and address. Anonymous communications are permissible. May I continue? Your request.
Two other people didn't have to give their name and address, claiming threat risks. I feel threatened by left-wing radicals. I can't hear you.
Everyone gave their name and municipality. It's the board's policy, sir.
Two people did not.
Sir, your time is running. It's your time to speak, but I need you to provide your name and municipality.
Am I recognized? I'm recognized because my time is running?
No, you're not recognized unless you... Until you provide your name and municipality.
My name is Anonymous, Middlesex County.
Sir, if I may, again, your time is running. We have a board policy.
Not recognized, then why is my time running if I'm not recognized?
Well, because you're taking your time.
That's not true. Anonymous, Edison Township.
Sir, if you would like to sit here and argue with me for your six minutes, that's fine.
Anonymous, Edison Township. Why is he arguing with me during my time? I just recognized myself. Anonymous, Edison Township.
You're not... Sir, no. Name and municipality, please. Sir, please.
John, Edison, New Jersey.
No, your name and municipality, please, sir.
John Doe, Edison, New Jersey. So during my time... Point of privilege, Council President, can you stop him right now?
You have no point of privilege, sir. You're not a board member.
Okay, I'm gonna follow tour claim against you. Cristo, Edison, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now you can shut up. It's my time. So, many lies have been told here. Number one, number one. School districts didn't voluntarily...
Folks, folks.
School districts didn't voluntarily sign up for this policy. They were threatened that if they did not, they would lose school funding. So, you know, let's call a spade a spade. That's number one. Number two, I respect all of you doing your First Amendment-protected activity, even if I disagree with you. This is how dialogue starts. But as you can see, two people didn't give their name and address. You've been bullying me. You were paid off to bully me. I want to know what the attorney's law firm is. In regards to policy 5756, it's more than just not notifying parents. It's about allowing people to use the wrong restroom. What's gonna happen when a male goes into the girl's restroom, rapes her, and then she gets pregnant? I hope... I was quiet while they spoke. I wish the same could be afforded to me. God bless America. At the end of the day, pride is a sin, but they're so prideful, they won't even know they're so wrong that they should repent. Repent to Jesus Christ and ask for forgiveness, but that's neither here nor there. The fact that these people come, they're not even from Edison. They're not Edison taxpayers. They don't have student... None of their kids are in this school. I see... I see Pat Coyle here. I see people from Mayor Sam Joshi's administration, but he doesn't have the time to give me...
Board President.
But he doesn't... I am... I'm talking to the board president. But he doesn't... Please don't talk to me. But he doesn't have the time to give me a meeting. It just goes to show you where they're... What they think is important. So, if it's an LGBTQ issue, then it's important enough for the mayor's staff to be here, which is absolutely disgusting. I went to Edison schools all my life. I'd like to know why not one person came up here, said the truth that whether we have this policy or we don't have this policy, Edison teachers were always the best, you know? There was never any situation my whole life here in Edison where any student was at risk either from the school or anything. But to say you guys can't give information to the parents, okay? The American Psychiatric Association said gender dysphoria is a mental illness in the 1970s, okay? They don't get to just redefine the whole universe because of their political agenda. Because we know that because of gender dysphoria, a lot of kids are suicide and do self-harm. We have a bunch of people today that want to promote an agenda where statistically the kid, it leads the kids to suicide. You know, the school system, it's to educate the kid. I support all kids. Any kid can grow up and decide what they want to be and I'll support them. What I don't support is when sick-ass adults get together and try to force their sexuality on children or tell them how to think. That's what I'm really against. Yeah, so it's not just the LGBTQ community, it's LGBTQP community. They also have pedophiles in their community as well. So, God bless America. I'm gonna follow tour claim on the lawyer for bullying me while I was up here, but I mean, as you can see, I never threaten nobody as they're speaking. My mouth's shut, but when they don't like something they hear, they interrupt the speaker. They took up at least a minute, 30 seconds of my time. It's all right, I'm gonna come back up for public comments and rebuttals. But yeah, I love you. I don't have anything against you guys. I know they have something against me, but again, I forgive each and every one of you. I have no problem with any of you. And we can continue this... And we can continue this debate at another time.
Celeste Fiori?
Thank you very much. My name is Celeste Fiori. My pronouns are "they/them", and I'm an attorney here in the great state of New Jersey. So, every time I... And I am from...
We'll need your address. We'll need your name and the municipality, sir. Let's...
I'm sorry. Can I... I'm putting an appearance on the record. I'm not being combative. I'm... I live in Piscataway. I'm not here to... That's all right. I'm the one that looked up the policy. It's Policy 167. As I said before, I'm an attorney here in the great state of New Jersey. I do not represent... Obviously, I don't represent the board, and I don't represent any parents here tonight. I'm speaking in my own personal capacity. But I think it's really important that, as a lawyer, I stand up here and I make sure that you all, as a board, know that you have a right to your own counsel. You have a right to choose the attorney that you have representing you. You have a right to question the legal advice that you are being given. You have the right, and you have a duty, to the students that you serve, to actually be critically questioning the legal advice that you are being given because ultimately, while you may not be responsible in a personal capacity, there are ramifications when you don't actually follow the law. And I'm not up here to preach what the law is because you can either look it up, you can find it, but also, it, unsummonable, is very much open to interpretation. But really, the point of me standing here tonight is to let you know that the students who are being protected by a policy like 5756, they grow up to be lawyers just like me, except I didn't have a policy that would have protected me from forced outing to my parents. I didn't have a policy that would have allowed me to actually do even better than I did. So, if you can imagine that, I'm a pretty successful lawyer. I was actually a member of the... trustee of the State Bar Association. So, I wasn't just a lawyer who, like, who people suffered with. I was a lawyer that people chose to have me come and speak to them. I was a lawyer where they would make accommodations, and they would make sure that there was a bathroom that I could use that was in accordance with my gender identity, which is in compliance with our law against discrimination. But a lot of times, our public facilities are not there. And you may wonder, Counsel, why are you talking to me about this? Because 5756 also provides bathroom access for students to be able to use the restrooms in accordance with their gender identity. And if you've ever been at an event where you've been forced to use your brain but also hold your bladder at the same time, I can tell you that you cannot perform to your utmost capacity. I did, again, did not have the benefit of a safe and affirming public school environment. Now, I didn't go to school in New Jersey, but that's okay. It was still a public school, and it was in the 90s. And that these types of policies didn't exist. I didn't live in a jurisdiction that had a robust law against discrimination. And I really... I actually want you to hear me when I say the words "law against discrimination". And you may be wondering, how does this really happen? How does this come up in schools? Because children are citizens too. They're people with rights. They're people with autonomy. And guess what? They grow up really quickly. If you've ever parented children, which I have, you turn around and one day, they're like... They're driving cars, and it's terrifying. And you're trying to figure out... Say, you have a transgender child. You're trying to figure out if you're going to counsel them to get an X-gender marker on their driver's license. Because, I don't know if you all are aware of this, but thanks to Bab Siperstein, a great transgender rights activist in New Jersey, since 2017, we have had an X-gender marker on our birth certificates. And very shortly thereafter, the DMV allowed for an X-gender marker. The U.S. Passport Office allows for an X-gender marker. And again, you might be saying, Counsel, why do you keep bringing this up? Because when your schools are already not reaching children, where you're trying to figure out how to teach them to a test, when you're trying to find out how they are gonna perform the best statistically, maybe you should make sure that they're in a psychologically safe environment where they can use the bathroom, they can play on sports teams, they can be in sex-segregated facilities that correspond to their gender identity because these are very basic things. And I know, because I have... I had this growing up. I have this lived experience, not only personally, but also representing parents of transgender children who are seeking name changes to affirm their child's gender identity, which, if you get a court order, I think you all know on the school board that when there's a court order that says this is the child's name, you have to use that name, right? And I know that you know that because you're getting good counsel from your current attorney. And again, you might be asking yourselves, why am I bringing this up? Because schools are not keeping up. If you look at where we are as a society, everywhere else, we have an X-gender marker on things. Do you have gender-inclusive bathrooms in your schools? Are you... Do you have... Or do you have a plan for when the non-binary kid wants to play on a sex-segregated sports team? Do you know what the NJSSI-A policy is? Because the thing is, I think that we... I think that you are sitting here, and I hate to put thoughts in your head, but, you know, that wasn't really an open meeting the last time, that maybe, maybe because transgender people are such a small segment of the population that it's not gonna affect your data if something terrible happens to them. And I really hope that's not the case. But I wanted to stand before you as a very... I'd like to think accomplished and well-spoken adult who's non-binary, uses "they/them" pronouns, and I get respected everywhere that I am. But where that starts is in schools for most of these young people. So, thank you for your time. Please, don't repeal this policy.
Hi, my name is Ruth Rowe, and I live in Montclair, New Jersey. I'm an openly gay Korean-American and parent to three children. I'm also a founding board member of AAPI New Jersey. I am here to speak in support of Policy 5756 because it protects the well-being of vulnerable students, especially Asian-American students. Under this policy, students are able to confide in teachers without the fear that deeply personal information would be disclosed to their parents. I have relatives in Edison who are not unlike my own parents. And it's amazing to see the rise in support of LGBTQ children in Asian families. But I experienced firsthand how unsafe home environments can be for LGBTQ youth, especially within many tight-knit cultural communities like some Asian-American communities here. Many LGBTQ youth seriously consider attempting suicide, and those who experience rejection from their families are eight times more likely to attempt suicide than those who feel accepted. These students are at risk, and policies like 5756 help protect them. Growing up, my parents made their stance clear. I have a good relationship with them now, but under their roof, any suggestion that I might be gay filled them with uncontrollable rage. And this was long before I was aware of my own identity. When I did come to know, I confided in two friends at school, but I was forbidden from meeting friends after school, so I spent most of my time at home. I didn't come out to my parents until I was an adult and safely living on my own. And even then, I faced harassment and isolation, until I was able to threaten to disown them. Teachers provide a vital, safe space for students, and forcing them to break that trust creates a devastating breach. This isn't about keeping secrets from parents. It's about protecting students who might not have anyone else they can turn to. Parents absolutely deserve to know if their child is in danger, but exploration of identity and self-discovery belongs to the student. It should be their choice when, how, and with whom to share that journey. Before voting to abolish this protection, I urge the board to reflect. If your child was on the path to self-discovery, and they confided in you, would you expose their deeply personal thoughts to someone who might react with harm? Would you break that trust? Protecting our students means trusting them and educators who care for them. So, I urge you to consider the harm you may cause to the individual students before you resolve to repeal this protection. Thank you.
Navi Ragavan?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lavanya Ragavan. I'm a board member at AAPI New Jersey... Oh, sorry. I'm here from Glen Ridge, New Jersey. I'm a board member at AAPI New Jersey, the largest Asian-American organization in the state of New Jersey. I'm also here as a community organizer, and most importantly, as a first-generation immigrant parent. Like many in this room, I'm raising a child in a country that I did not grow up in, a journey that doesn't come with a blueprint. One thing I know for certain is that, as parents, we all share a common wish for our children: to be happy, healthy, and successful. And for our children to truly succeed, they must have the freedom to live as their authentic selves. Transgender and LGBTQ youth face elevated risks of mental health struggles and suicide. Educators and therapists have spoken about this, so I will do not need to repeat what they have said. Reports from the Trevor Project highlight that when schools adopt inclusive policies, including the use of correct pronouns, gender-neutral facilities, transgender youth experience a substantial drop in suicide attempts and mental health crises. The data is undeniable, and this certainly seems to be a data-driven district. And it tells us, and this data tells us, that the safe space a school provides is not just beneficial, it is essential. Tonight, as you gather on the eve of Diwali to fulfill your duty to this community, your dharma to this community, I urge you to spread the light of acceptance and unwavering support for all our children. Let us light the way with love. Let us strive to create communities and schools where each and every student feels valued and supported. I urge you to support Policy 5756. Thank you for your time.
Anthony Jay?
Anthony Mar... Excuse me. Anthony Mar, residing in Edison. You've heard me before. Some of the things I'm going to say tonight, you've heard before, but good things are worth repeating.
Please continue.
The Lord Jesus Christ gave us the golden rule. You can't argue with it. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Why do I bring this up? Because Policy 5756 violates it. Is there a parent anywhere in this town, maybe even anywhere in this country, who wants to be kept in the dark about what's going on with his or her son or daughter? If we say, "Don't tell Mom and Dad", where do we draw the line? What about a drug problem? Keep him in the dark about that. What about a drinking problem? What about poor grades? Where do we draw the line? Let Mom and Dad be Mom and Dad. Are all Mom and Dads perfect? Of course not. Policy 5756 says, "Keep Mom and Dad in the dark." If you don't want to be kept in the dark as a parent, why do you do it to Edison parents? That's hypocrisy. Don't do that. God also gave us another fundamental rule of living, the Fifth Commandment: honor your father and your mother. You can't argue with that. What parent does not want to be honored? Well, 5756 dishonors Mom and Dad. Keep them in the dark. Don't tell them what the school personnel know. Mr. Schneider, Mr. Rivera, you're running for reelection. Your website says that you are upholding parents' rights. If you vote to retain 5756, you can't say that. That's hypocrisy. You either abolish 5756, in which case you can proudly say, "We uphold parents' rights", or wipe that out from your website and your literature. You can't have it both ways. It's one or the other. Let's talk about competing in sports. You've got boys competing with girls. Shame on you. Shame on you. This isn't equality. I've heard a lot about equality tonight. That's superiority. That's superior... That's wrong. And sharing bathrooms? Yeah. Suppose a guy says, "You know what? I'm a girl, but today, I'm gonna change my mind." We're the grown-ups. We're supposed to be educating the students. Do we tell them of the harmful effects of growing transgender? Namely, the transgender student is gonna do serious damage. These are her reproductive organs. Are they gonna have children in the usual way? In the usual way? Not... It's not gonna happen. At least, it's gonna be very, very difficult. As opposed to the straight student. He has a much better ch... He or she has a much better chance of having children in the usual way. They're children. Do they really know this? Are they gonna cut themselves off from being parents? Do you tell them this? Do you educate them that? There seems to be fear about what... If 5756 is repealed, what do we replace it with? Replace it with education. Replace it with telling them, "Okay, you wanna go the transgender route? Know the consequences." There's been a lot of talk about suicide. I don't need to add to it. It's a fact. Excuse me. It's a fact. Educate them. Tell them of the consequences. And keep Mom and Dad in the loop so that they can be the parents that they want to be. Repealing 5756 does not violate the law. New Jersey law remains intact. New Jersey law against discrimination, it's still there. You have no authority to repeal or override it. You're simply paving another way to say to the student, "Understand the long-term consequences of a decision you make to go transgender." You're gonna have a very difficult time having children. Do you know the consequences of that? Do you appreciate it? Again, they're the children. You're... We're the educators. We're supposed to tell them that. You're not violating the law. In fact, the court case of Platten versus Hanover tantrum of Board of Ed contains a statement from the Attorney General where it specifically stated that the Attorney General concedes Policy 5756 is not required by the law. Retain 5756. Bless the parents of this town. Let them be the parents that they want to be. Thank you for listening.
Helen Zhang?
Hello. Can you hear me through my mask? Okay, excellent. Hi, I'm Helen. I'm from Edison. Today, I will be reading a letter from a former student who wasn't unable to attend today. My name is Karan Manon, and I am currently a data scientist in Seattle. I was born and raised in Edison, and I'm a proud alum of JP Stevens. I was incredibly dismayed to see the recent action of the Board of Education against our transgender youth. It has already been concerning to see similar events happen in several conservative states, and to see this happen in the liberal bastion that I consider home is a reminder of how we shouldn't take our liberties for granted and that we should take an active role in ensuring justice for all. I think parents' rights and parental involvement in their children's future is important, and I attribute the success of many Edison kids to it. But given the traditional mindset of many parents, it has its limits. I have LGBT friends who still haven't told their parents well into adulthood. As a student, it was normal for relationships to be concealed even by heterosexual couples out of fear of their parents' misunderstanding or retaliation. One can imagine how difficult and scary it must then be for queer students. It takes a lot of bravery to embrace a different sexuality or gender identity internally, and it takes even more to come out to the world. In an ideal world, children should be supported throughout their journey by their parents, but this cannot always happen. In the interest of their mental health and self-discovery, transgender individuals should get the choice to come out in the way most comfortable to them. One of the reasons cited, it... One of the reasons cited in blocking the state policy was a desire to not have transgender issues taught in schools. As a place of education, schools should promote positive values like acceptance for all and provide knowledge and understanding of LGBTQ issues. Such actions will benefit us all as a whole. I credit Edison schools with being different from others by encouraging us to understand perspectives different from our own and going beyond the traditional male and Eurocentric norms of thinking. At JP Stevens, we read a book written in African-American dialect, another about a woman discovering her sexuality and self-identity in a conservative society, and books by LGBTQ authors. As students, we questioned these choices since they were quite different from Shakespeare or Dickens, but we realized it doesn't mean those perspectives were less valid. I was able to gain new perspectives and understand those outside of our bubble, which is especially important for many of us. As South Asians in a mostly white society, we want our expression and understanding from others. Transgender people, like all of us, deserve the same treatment. In a town like Edison with its strong immigrant background, some of us worry that LGBTQ topics conflict with our beautiful traditions and values. I could not disagree more. I am proud of my Indian roots and uphold both my Hindu and cultural traditions. I can speak the most for my own South Asian culture, and I would like to highlight that there is a long history of both trans and gender nonconforming people in Indian history. Alternative gender identities were respected in ancient India and recognized by religious doctrine. For example, Lord Vishnu is often defined as gender fluid and sometimes assumes the female form of Mohini. Transgender identity is nuanced, and we must actively understand this nuance and give them understanding, inclusion, and acceptance. I strongly urge the Board of Education to reconsider its appeal of Policy 5756. Thank you.
Thank you. Indra.
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 So my name is Indra, and I'm from Attacha. I also have a trans child. We were fortunate that our son came out to us first, but it wasn't just because we were his parents. It was also because, through our actions and words, we provided a safe and supportive environment where he was able to tell his story. With that confidence, he came out to his grandmother, who embraced him with love and open-hearted support. And today, she is his biggest champion. Her acceptance also set the tone for our extended family, helping them to understand that he is the same bright, caring kid he's always been, and that love and acceptance are truly what matters. However, not every child has this kind of support system. Policy 5756 is an important, student-focused transgender policy that ensures a safe and inclusive space for students to explore and understand their identities without fear. For some children, home may not be a safe place to express their true selves, making school the only environment where they can find safety, affirmation, and understanding essential to their well-being. Repealing Policy 5756 would remove that safe space, leaving vulnerable trans students without the critical protection they need to thrive. This isn't just about policy. It's about creating a school culture that fosters respect, understanding, and acceptance, regardless of their background or identity. Our trans children deserve to feel secure in their own skin and to have a supportive space to learn and grow. Even for our family, Policy 5756 has been critical to ensure that his rights are protected. We are grateful to our school district for having the student-centered policy. Just to give you an example, this was my son's experience at his middle school. The principal spoke to our son directly when she noticed he was using he/him pronouns and using a new name. She asked him how she and a school could be supportive of him. She ensured that all his teachers used his preferred name and pronoun, afforded him the right to privacy, but also allowed him to tell his story on his terms. As parents, we could not have asked for a more safe and inclusive environment for him. At the last Board of Ed meeting, many of you spoke about your rights as parents, how much you love your children, and how you want to guide your children. What I didn't hear was the students' perspective, those that would be most impacted by repealing this policy. I would like to share my son's story with you. For my son, it was important to come out on his own terms. Being able to speak his own truth not only gave him control over his own coming out, but also gave him the self-confidence to advocate for himself and others. Now, I want you to hear from my son in his own words. "I'm a freshman in high school. I love playing soccer, singing, and building robots. I can go on for days about Marvel movies and Shakespeare, and I happen to be trans. As far back as I can remember, I knew I was a boy. It wasn't something that you had to be told. You just knew, like your favorite food or your favorite song. Before I came out, I always tried to figure out what was wrong with me, why it felt so different from what I was told. Every time I looked in the mirror, it was always another person, just a costume staring back at me. I felt alone and different, but that all changed when I got to sixth grade. We read a book about a fourth-grade trans girl on her journey to coming out. Everything that she described feeling in the book matched my own feelings, and the joy she felt when she came out was what I dreamt of feeling one day. I finally realized that I wasn't alone and that I wasn't wrong, and now I had a word to describe who I always had been. I was a trans person that had so many people who would love me no matter what, and so I came out. I remember being most scared about coming out to my grandma, my dadima. My dadima has always been a huge part of my life. When I came out to her, I sat her down and I told her that I was a boy. She had the best reaction. She told me that she already knew. She also told me that she would love me no matter what. About a month later on, on Raksabandhan, my dadima went a step further. For those of you who don't know, Raksabandhan is a holiday where sisters tie a bracelet called a raki onto their brothers to show their love and pray for his well-being. Every year, dadima would buy the rakis for us, and that particular year, she brought a special one for my sister to tie on me. It said, "Me rabai," which in English means "my brother." I will always remember that day when my dadima gave the raki to me for my sister to tie on to me for the very first time as her brother. Not all kids have the family that I have. Many of my friends are in the process of coming out as trans or non-binary, and they don't have a supportive family to make them feel safe. Given that my time's coming out, my son's story and those of other trans students are the voices that you should be listening to. There is so much misinformation out there, but these are the kids that are most impacted. They are future doctors, engineers, artists, and community leaders, and being trans is just one part of them. To the Board of Ed, Keeping Policy 5756 will send a message through your words and actions to students in Edison that you hear them and are focused on creating a supportive and inclusive environment, which will empower trans students to thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm early in the drop. Priyanka Parker. I told you I messed it up. Here's the... Okay.
Thank you. My name is Priy Parker. I'm from New Brunswick.
Enjoy.
My pronouns are they/them, and I am a trans and non-binary Bengali-American resident of New Jersey. I did not feel safe coming out when I was younger to my parents, and I did not come out to them until I was 30 years old, financially independent, and living on the other side of the country from them. That should give you a little clue into how fraught South Asian family dynamics can be when it comes to coming out. I am still not out to my extended family in India. If I had been outed earlier in my life, I would have lost my parents' financial support. I would not have gone to college. I would not have been able to leave the conservative small town I grew up in, and I may not be standing before you today. I'm here today on behalf of Manavi, where I'm an advocate and outreach coordinator for the South Asian LGBTQ+ survivor community. Manavi, founded in 1985, is the first organization in the United States dedicated to ending all forms of violence against South Asian survivors of intimate partner violence and domestic violence. I would like to speak briefly about the potential impact that removing Policy 5756 could have on South Asian trans students in Edison from an intimate partner violence perspective. One study found that 31% of transgender people compared to 20% of their cisgender counterparts had experienced intimate partner violence or dating violence in their lifetime. Lifetime IPV and sexual assault prevalence amongst transgender people ranges from 25% to as high as 47%. And this is not due intrinsically to being trans or LGBTQ. This is because of discrimination and systemic oppression. For many LGBTQ+ people, interpersonal violence often begins in youth or young adulthood. Another study found that nearly four, one in four transgender high school-age students had been forced to have sex against their will as opposed to 15% of their cisgender peers. Transgender students are also reported at higher risk for levels of physical and sexual dating violence compared to their cisgender peers. People from marginalized communities are at greater increased risk to experience interpersonal violence, as abusers will often capitalize on existing social and economic vulnerabilities to wield control. For trans people, this often shows up as abusers weaponizing existing homophobic, transphobic systems of stigma, discrimination, and lack of knowledge about queer people to perpetuate their control. The South Asian community typically utilizes informal support systems first when seeking help for intimate partner violence. This means going to a family member, a teacher, or a religious leader. Removing the protection that Policy 5756 provides to trans students removes two of those crucial informal support systems. It removes two safe spaces, school and home, that trans students might be able to go to to seek help. This dramatically increases their risk of experiencing interpersonal violence in the immediate future and across their lifetime. These stigma, homophobia, and transphobia within the South Asian community compounds this issue, making South Asian trans youth particularly vulnerable and in need of protection. Only 10% of Indian LGBTQ kids report access to affirming spaces in their communities. These stark statistics indicate that being able to come out on their own terms is extremely important to the health and safety of South Asian trans youth. School may be the only place where they are safe to express themselves fully and authentically and build confidence in their identities. Self-confidence, community support, and acceptance are all protective factors against abuse and violence. If we don't protect trans students by upholding Policy 5756, then they will be dealing with the repercussions of our mistake potentially for the rest of their lives. Exposure to interpersonal violence and sexual violence can result in lifelong conditions such as bodily injury, STIs, PTSD, substance use, depression, anxiety, and suicide. I implore you, on behalf of Manavi and the South Asian LGBTQ+ community, to uphold Edison School District's mission of creating a safe and inclusive learning environment by standing with trans students and protecting their bodily autonomy and safety at school and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Pragati Kundalwal.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Hello, my name is Pragati. I am an Edison resident and an alum of our Edison Public School System from the first grade through the 12th. Today, I will be reading you a letter from my former classmate and my dear, dear friend, Leo. His statement starts now. "My name is Leo Hegde. I use he and they pronouns. I am a trans masculine and queer Indian-American born in New Jersey. I grew up in Edison and was a student in the Edison School District from K to 12. I graduated from JP Stevens High School in 2015, where I was a dedicated member of the JP Stevens Band and good friends with Jerry She's daughter, Heidi. I strongly support keeping Policy 5756, which creates a safe space in Edison schools for students to explore their identities in a safe and supportive environment. I did not feel comfortable coming out as trans and queer when I was a student in Edison. I was worried that my parents would be unsupportive or cut me off because of ignorant comments they had made about trans and queer people. And I knew that many South Asian families do not have culturally relevant resources or education on LGBTQ identities. I didn't see open support for LGBTQ kids in school either, other than a small GSA at the time. I felt a huge amount of anxiety as a high schooler, trying to keep my identities a secret from my family, friends, classmates, and teachers. I wished that I had more support in high school from my teachers, counselors, and peers to feel safe disclosing my queer and trans identities. I did not come out as trans until college, where I had plenty of support from the LGBTQIA Center on my campus. It was only when I felt safe enough to explore my identity in a supportive community that I shared with my parents that I was trans. It was important for me to tell them on my own timeline. In a political moment where trans youth are being used as scapegoats by opportunistic right-wing politicians, I am extremely disappointed to hear that the Edison Board of Ed is considering repealing this policy. The Trevor Project's 2023 survey on the mental health of LGBTQ young people shows that fewer than 40% of LGBTQ young people found their home to be LGBTQ-affirming. Forced outings to unsupportive parents can be devastating to trans youth and contribute to already disproportionately high rates of suicide amongst LGBTQ youth. If the Edison Board of Ed wants to support trans kids and their parents, it should work on providing accurate and culturally relevant education about trans identity for all parents in the Edison School District. This will help students feel safe and supported to come out to their families on their own terms. Thank you."
Thank you. Laura Choi.
My name is Laura Zhang Choi from Stuartsville, New Jersey. I am on the steering committee member of API Rainbow Parents of PFLAG. I'm a parent of a transgender young adult, a faith leader, and educator in the Presbyterian Church USA. I will not reiterate what so many advocates have already said about why children like mine deserve equal treatment as every other student. I find it my duty to speak up as an Asian-American mom who supports her child's gender identity because our stories are still very invisible in our communities. I have witnessed firsthand what happens to the mental health of children and young people like mine when they do not receive the acceptance that they deserve from their families or their communities. So instead of giving you more data, maybe you should know that for two years between eighth and ninth grades, many days, for many days, I worried that my kid would not live into adulthood. You should also know that for seven months, for seven months out of the school year, my kid did not go to the bathroom at school. And this is, this is after I started advocating for my child's needs and... And this is, this is after I started advocating for my child's needs and support. You should also know that my child's tenth grade English teacher outed her to me not for, for a show of support and solidarity, but she didn't know me. She didn't know whether I would go home and harm my child or kick her out of the house. She didn't know. She wanted to show solidarity and support. So for families like mine, we also know a disproportionate number, a disproportionate number of families who lost their children to suicide because they just did not have enough time for the adults in their lives to get it together. No children deserve to die because their world is hostile to their existence because of who they inherently are. No child deserves to be excluded because the adults refuse to create safe space, spaces of safety and belonging for them. And I don't have the data for this, but maybe we can all attest to the safe teacher that we all had when we were younger. A safe teacher is often the first adult that a child, a trans child comes out to, just to, as a testing ground for what it might be like to come out to an adult. So you are actually also putting teachers at risk for specifically supporting their students. So I invite you to reconsider your decision, also due to the legal ramifications and your obligation to uphold state and federal protections for trans students. Because I want everyone to hear me when I say this, especially the young people in the room, that regardless of whether this policy exists in the language in your policy manual, removing this policy does not negate any of the rights that trans and non-binary students are entitled to. They just won't know it. They just won't know that it, that they have those rights. So as a public school that receives federal funding, you are obligated to comply to Title IX that prohibits discrimination against gender, race, and sex. So as a district, you will still be obligated to provide the same, same rights, same access to trans and non-binary students, just as listed in this policy. Nothing the district is obligated to do will be any different. The only thing that removing this policy will do is to prevent trans and non-binary students and their families from knowing that they have certain rights. How would they know they have rights if it's not explicitly written somewhere that they can access? How would teachers know what their students' rights are? So removing a policy that explicitly protects a protected class of students not only opens a district up for potential lawsuits, which can be very costly, but it diminishes your obligations as Board of Ed members to protect all students because that is your job. Even though you are elected by your community, by parents and your neighbors, but once you're elected, and I know this is not the first time you've heard this because I've heard this as well, your constituents are not the voters. Your constituents are the students who count on you to ensure that all kids have the safest environment possible to pursue academic excellence, because that is the goal. You're elected to be the voice of all students first and foremost and to create a climate and culture where students are free to pursue the best versions of themselves. So removing this policy will not accomplish that end. It will only make it unsafe for protected class of students that you're obligated to protect. So please reconsider your position on this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Gayatri Mathur. Gayatri Mathur. Reed Rodriguez. Mandar Engel. Oh, Arthi Krybek, sorry.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education in Edison. My name is Arthi Krybek. I'm from Glen Rock, New Jersey. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a trained neuroscientist. I am a community leader. I'm a former elected official, and I'm the board member of AAPI New Jersey. Most importantly, and the most important reason I'm here today, is that I'm a Desi mom. I'm here to urge you to vote no on the repeal of Policy 5756, as many of us are here to tell you that today. I'm here to urge you to stand up, to protect our trans youth, particularly our AAPI trans youth. As someone who is familiar with sitting on the dais and making decisions for our community, I know it's not easy. I know you're here because you care about our students, and I urge you to act with that in mind, front and center. Your mission is to empower every child to become a confident, creative, and self-sufficient learner. Yet repealing Policy 5756 opposes this mission, putting our LGBTQ plus students at risk of severe mental and emotional harm. You've heard that today with multiple statistics and true brave, vulnerable, amazing, incredible personal stories. Consider this: fifty percent of Indian-American LGBTQ plus youth and nearly forty percent of LGBTQ plus youth in New Jersey report self-harming or seriously considering suicide. These aren't just statistics. These are our children, our loved ones, lights in our communities who have been extinguished, and their losses reverberate deeply. For many LGBTQ plus students, school is often the only place they feel safe enough to be themselves. You've heard this over and over and over and over again. This policy ensures that they have a supportive affirming space where their identity is respected and where they can feel safe and valued. This is core to all of your mission. Without this protection, their sense of belonging is jeopardized, leading to deep pain, heightened anxiety, depression, and severe risks to their well-being, and it is a pain and a scar and hurtful for our entire community. And you can listen to just some of the dangerous and damaging statements that have been made before me today. They have to, to understand the deep well of pain and how unsafe students might be feeling here today, as well as in schools and in our communities. To be clear, this Policy 5756 doesn't infringe on parental rights. It simply provides LGBTQ plus students, who are at risk, as we've heard, a safe place to feel valued. Retaining this policy is so important. You've had many brave and vulnerable students and other folks speaking their lived experiences and bearing their pain to you in an effort to help you understand. This is enormous emotional labor, and I'm so angry on their behalf that they have to be here. Please honor them with your compassion. It is important to remember that just because some of us support our LGBTQ plus youth at home, others may not. In South Asian households in particular, and AAPI communities in general, we need to foster open, inclusive conversations around LGBTQ issues, breaking the myth that this is somehow a Western phenomenon or something other. Our LGBTQ youth, our youth in general, deserve this understanding and support in every community and every home. As BOE members, you have a unique opportunity to lead by example and support conversations that bring awareness and empathy, rather than add to anxiety or misinformation or pain. Indeed, you can play a pivotal role in increasing inclusion and belonging for all youth in the school system by not only keeping this policy, but considering other ways in which you can increase inclusion and belonging. And finally, repealing Policy 5756 also invites legal and financial risks. We've heard at least one, maybe more people today talk about this, but talk about how they've come here to ask you for accountability for taxes. And we've seen in other districts across New Jersey that removing these protections can lead to, can lead to legal troubles and costly legal challenges that could drain taxpayer funds, money that should be going towards our children's education, not fighting avoidable litigation. So please, consider both the moral and financial consequences of your decision. For the well-being of our students and to fulfill your responsibility to the community, keep Policy 5756 in place. Help ensure that every child in Edison feels safe, respected, and empowered to thrive. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mandar, Mandar. Dayanand Shetty.
Thank you for your service to this community. My name is Dan Finney. My address is in Coltsneck.
I'm sorry, I already called Dayanand Shetty. You can come back later. I need to go in order. There's no Dayanand Shetty, right? Okay, I'll move to the next one. Vikas. I can't read the last name. Vikas Bosri? Vikas? Madhuri Mukherjee?
Members of the Board, my name is Madhuri Mukherjee. I live in Montclair, New Jersey, but I am here to read a letter from Dr. Dennis Flores, who is the Class of 1942 endowed term chair and associate professor at the University of Pennsylvania School of Nursing. These are the words of Dr. Flores. My research, that has been funded by the National Institute of Health for more than a decade, revolves around ways adults may best support youth going through puberty, including children who may identify as transgender. A consistent finding we've seen through the years is the clear value of explicit and tacit support for youth who are going through the tumultuousness of adolescence. When trusted adults, such as those in schools, provide clear and consistent support to young people who may be questioning their gender identities, the mental and physical health of these youth are fortified. To this end, removing school protections such as Policy 5756 that allow youth who may have diverse gender identities to be supported in school settings is ill-advised. Not only does it make it harder for youth to have the space to more fully figure themselves out, which is a typical adolescent task, it also conveys that there's something inherently wrong with these, with those who may be gender diverse youth. LGBTQ plus youth in New Jersey enjoy protections that their counterparts in many states do not have. This is because enlightened representatives have enshrined policies that make clear how LGBTQ plus youth are not second-class citizens. Through policy deliberations backed by science and informed by citizens who live these realities every day, citizens of Edison, for example, have policies that are the envy of individuals who live outside New Jersey. Rolling back explicit protections makes it harder for future youth to know what services and support they can avail of. It also runs counter to what we know about accessible and clear guidelines that ensure access to caring adults and fair health outcomes. Removal of Policy 5756 is tantamount to failing youth who happen to be gender diverse. We cannot allow a reversal of gains that have been lifesaving for countless youth in New Jersey. Thank you for your time and your fair consideration. Sincerely, Dennis Flores, Ph.D., ACRN, FAAN, from the University of Pennsylvania School of Nursing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anjali, Anjali Merotra.
My name is Anjali Merotra, and I live in Mountainside, New Jersey. I'm first going to read a letter from Dr. Raja Gopal Bhatter. We have heard from members of different faith communities. I feel like we have not necessarily heard from the Hindu community, that I think a lot of people here are represented. Dr. Raja Gopal Bhatter is a nationally recognized leader in higher education, an advocate, consultant, author, and Hindu priest. Dr. Bhatter comes from a lineage of Hindu spiritual leaders from Therupati and is a proud queer and gender nonconforming person of color, they say. Hinduism is and has always been deeply rooted in inclusion and pluralism, particularly around gender and sex. As we look at many of our great epics, whether we read the Bhagavad Gita, the Mahabharata, or the Vedas, each talks extensively about the gender diversity in our tradition and the divine right to protect and support people of many identities. The Manusmiti mentions the third sex identity as a valid identity called Sritya Prakriti. The Mahabharata has many stories of transgender people being protected, particularly when Arjun lives in a harem of hijras which not only identifies trans and gender queer people as accepted in society, but as also key people within the king's palace. As policymakers, our job is to increase protection for all our people and to use our faith or other traditions to increase access and equity, not to use outdated colonial ideas to harm our children. If you are truly invested in children's well-being, then you will all continue to, continue the productions for all children, especially LGBTQ kids. This commitment to Ahimsa is the core foundation of our Hindu worldview and what has helped us evolve for thousands of years. This is from Dr. Raja Bhatter. I would like to say a few things as myself now. I am speaking here today as an Indian-American, an immigrant, a parent, and an advocate who has fought for education, equity, and gender parity in Trenton. Last year, I was one of the people that was key to passing a bill that now requires free menstrual products to be placed in girls' and on-gender bathrooms in all of New Jersey's public schools. I fought for four years to make that bill inclusive. That is what I am most proud of. I am also the mother of twin girls. I think it is important that I, as a cis woman who is the mother of cisgender daughters, cisgender daughters, sorry, speak out to protect our vulnerable trans and non-binary students. As I said before, I live in Mountainside. Mountainside is not that far from Edison. It's like one town over. When my kids were growing up, we spent a lot of time in Edison. My kids went to dance school here for thirteen years. They danced along kids that went to Edison schools, to Edison High and to JP Stevens, and are friends with them. So I think it is important for me to be here, to recognize that when New Jersey put forward the statute, this transgender policy guidance 5756, it was to protect all students across the state. Your zip code and where you live should not matter. It is also important that I address the homophobia, transphobia, and stigma about LGBTQ identities that you have heard from many, many speakers here tonight. The reality is that most of us will never know the challenges faced by a family whose child is queer. But those who do, every single one of them wants to keep this policy in place. That should tell us something. Why? Because above all, they want to see their children alive. I am very worried about the lives of these children, and as the Board of Education, your primary objective should be to provide a safe learning environment for all the kids. And so you should be too. I'm not going to rehash all the stats that you've heard many times, but I think one of them is important. We know that outing can lead to, without consent, can lead to serious consequences, and it's been reported tonight that thirty-nine percent of Indian LGBTQ kids have seriously considered suicide in the past year and twenty have actually attempted it. But I want to bring attention to the fact that these are not merely statistics. Just two weeks ago, on October fourteenth, here in New Jersey, Raven Sayed, a trans Desi student at Rider University, was found deceased in his dorm room and apparent suicide, two weeks ago. So I trust you to think about this. It is truly a matter of life and death. I urge you, as the Edison Board of Education, to keep this policy to protect our most vulnerable students. I urge you to trust the students, your staff, and your administration to make the right decisions for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire McLennan.
Hi, my name is Claire. I'm from Attachen, and I'm very honored to read this.
I'm from Attachen, and I'm very honored to read this letter from Kevin Codavio. Dear Edison Board of Education, my name is Kevin Codavio. I am a former student from the district, having attended Edison Public Schools every year, K through 12. And I still have family, including a nephew in middle school and friends who, friends there, who I want to know will be voting in this year's election. I am writing to urge you all to vote against the repeal of policy 5756. After graduating from Edison High School, I volunteered for seven years, from 2017 to 2024, as a crisis counselor for the Trevor Project. I worked on their chat text lines, helping LGBTQ plus youth in crisis many and some nights, all of my conversations with trans kids who were considering suicide. If you know the data, this is unsurprising. A study by the Trevor Project found half of young trans people seriously considered suicide in the last year alone. Some of the kids I spoke to went through with suicide attempts. A primary factor in the vast majority of these young people's crises was their transphobic, often abusive, parents. For many, one bit of hope and happiness in their lives was supportive adults at school. Repealing policy 5756 will rip away this refuge. I understand the instinct to keep parents informed about everything related to their children, but doing so, in this case, has deadly consequences. The fact is, repealing policy 5756 and outing trans students to their parents absolutely has the potential to kill kids. Kill kids. Guys, come on, do better. For the sake of protecting our young people's lives, please do not repeal policy 5756. Sincerely, Kevin Codavio.
Rowan Bustamante. I can't read the letter. Oh, sorry.
Hello. Hi, I'm Rowan Bustamante from Elmwood Park. Today...
Ma'am, will you, your address, please?
Elmwood Park, yeah. Today, I don't just want to talk about my story, but I want to talk about the way I grew up and my childhood friend's story. Before I was ever kind of even introduced to the idea of being different and knowing I'm different, I knew that there was something up and that people were allowed to be different and that it was common. I grew up in a household where I wasn't shamed for being who I am. And I grew up in a household where, yeah, my parents earned their trust from me. And part of that is the thought of students being outed to not just their parents, but to their at-home family, knowing that it could be dangerous. Do you, these kids know their parents way better than you ever will. I mean, they grew up with them. If you feel as if you're in danger, there's a high chance that you could be in danger. Your job is to protect these vulnerable kids, to protect and help these kids who are coming to you for help, coming to you and opening up about their sexuality or their gender. And they're being outed. They're being outed and put back into, sent home, because clearly they can't stay here the whole day, sent home to environments where they could be in danger. Nobody, nobody knows. Only they do. And when, the reason that I can say this is because when I was younger, the first person I ever came out to was my best friend. And it was for the reason that he had opened up to me. And the reason that I never knew he was gay was because he was just, I thought it was normal. He was just telling me, well, I want to be a girl, and I want to do these things, but everybody says it's wrong. And he had opened up to not just me, but our guidance counselor. And it wasn't told to his parents, but when he ended up opening up to his parents, who he trusted, trigger warning abuse, he got hurt very badly by his parents. And I had to come to school the next day, knowing that my best friend was hurt by his parents for the reason, the same reason I was able to go home and be fine. And the point of this is that no, nobody can assume what's going to happen in a child's home. Not their friend, not their teacher, not their principal, not the Board of Education. Nobody knows what's going to happen in a child's home. And being gay is just a part of who somebody is. Being trans is a part of who somebody is. I am non-binary, and I am lucky to have a very accepting family. Maybe not all of them. But I am lucky to have those few people who I trust, who I will go up to and tell them about my identity, about my sexuality. But don't you think if a student or just a person in general isn't telling somebody something about their identity, there's a reason? Instead of outing, instead of outright outing the students, don't you think you should be looking on what's going on at home? I mean, it's, a student can't randomly choose to be gay one day, but they can grow up in abusive household. And I will keep saying, please, please, with the power that you have, don't take away trans kids' rights. Keep policy 5756. Thank you.
Julieta from South Amboy. Julieta from South Amboy. Julieta from South Amboy. Julieta, Julieta? Dalmi Q. Dennis Flores. Brett.
While we wait for that person to cough, I'd like to remind the board of proper decorum and respectful conduct are expected during the public speaking session. So if we could make sure that... Please, ma'am, ma'am, please.
People are clapping. People are not backing. We're just going to let that little flow until the person speaks. But we do, we do need everyone to be respectful. To the president, when he, when he's talking to all the next person up, we can't hear if you're clapping, and you're not going to be able to hear him if you're clapping, so.
Go ahead, Brett.
Good evening, board members and fellow community members. My name is Brett Baker, and I live in Edison. And my pronouns are he/him. I stand here as an advocate and an ally, but as a husband, a parent, a former educator of 15 years, and someone deeply committed to both my children and the educational environment we're building here in Edison. Our son is a first grader at James Monroe, and our almost three-year-old daughter will join him there soon. My wife's already given you our story. I was taking them home for bedtime. I've got to acknowledge it's bizarre and a little bit weird to be here as a parent of a child in this school system and listening to people making arguments against my own children's rights. I'm here tonight because I believe in the value of an education system that prioritizes our children's well-being, safety, and rights. I could tell you what I know about policy 5756, but there have been plenty and a ton of tremendous speakers who have the life and lived experiences that are most impacted by policy 5756. And you deserve to hear and remember those words from them. Tonight, I'm here before you as a parent and a former educator, and I must remind you as a taxpayer. I stand before you as a former educator who has made mistakes. At a school I worked at in the past, we had a transgender student. And I will own that early on, I did not handle things the best. It's hard as a teacher to admit your mistakes. I look back at those times now, and I wish I had handled things differently. I wish I had done things differently. I wish I was more curious. I wish I sought to understand. But since those days, I have vowed to remain relentlessly curious and to remain relentlessly open-minded to ensure that my eyes and my ears never close to the issues facing all of our students, but especially some of our most vulnerable populations. As a former educator, I understand the enormous trust parents place in schools, and I have that now as a parent. Parents must trust the educators, the administration, and of course, the school board to make decisions that are rooted in research and a deep understanding of our children's needs. That is why I unequivocally trust nearly every decision made by the adults in our son's life at James Monroe and at the central office under Dr. Eldorelli's tremendous leadership. Collectively, every adult under Dr. Eldorelli's leadership is working together to execute a vision that demands nothing less than excellence for all of our students, from our gifted and talented learners to our exceptional learners, and every student in between, despite the glaringly obvious distractions such as this move and this action. Until recently, I extended that trust to this board, confident that each decision was made in the best interest of our students, of my children. But the recent handling of policy 5756 has broken that trust. I trusted the Board of Education to make sound fiscal decisions and strong policy decisions, grounding every single decision in research and the gathering of facts from all involved. It is with a heavy heart that I stand before this body tonight to say that I do not trust the nine of you collectively up there. It is neither melodramatic nor hyperbolic to say that the one expectation I have had consistently of this board and this district since I moved to Edison in 2016 and began attending meetings was to ensure that this board and this district gathered the input of all stakeholders involved when making decisions. That's why I celebrated when Edison brought on two high school student leaders. I was certain we would listen to student voices on issues. Boy, was I wrong. I have shared time and time again that the student voice must be considered, at worst, heard at best, and should guide nearly all decisions this board makes. After all, our kids, my kids, are our greatest asset. Our kids are of utmost importance. Our kids deserve our protection. I was appalled to read about and then watch with my own eyes the previous board meeting. I was appalled to watch this board treat each other with such disrespect so as to not even warrant a discussion about such an important matter that impacts my children and others. I've been appalled at the misinformation I've heard before and since that meeting and some of the comments I've read in a petition that is knowingly being circulated by certain members of this board and those affiliated with this action. Let me be clear. The five votes last month to repeal this policy essentially told me that my children's rights do not matter. And I have said for many years before this body and throughout Edison, I may not like the backroom deals or the bickering on the dais. I may not like the sneaky off-hours decisions that are made or the compromises to save face, but this, this crosses the line. I will always draw the line when it comes to something that impedes on the rights of my children or other children. You all claim to have the best interest of children in mind, yet have allowed, have allowed the rhetoric in this town about this issue to devolve into such a horrifying state. The pure misinformation is staggering and appalling and shows a blatant disregard to facts, research, and even a genuine interest to understand the situation. I need this board and future boards to understand that in the wake of a global pandemic, we have academic learning outcomes that need to improve dramatically and urgently. I need this board to understand the threat of gun violence is real, say nothing about the threat of gun violence in our schools. I need this board to take seriously that the teaching profession and working in schools is a difficult one and one that is grossly underpaid, grossly undervalued, and grossly underappreciated. And I need this board, and I need future boards, and I need everyone to understand that every single child, no matter their age, no matter their gender, no matter their race, ethnicity, or religion, and absolutely certainly not their sexual orientation or gender identity, every child, regardless of all of those things, deserve as a basic right, the right to be loved. And I woke up the morning after this meeting and questioned if this board loved my child the way I love them. The right to be cared for, the right to be understood, and the right to feel safe every day when they walk into school by taking away a child's right to make the decision about who knows what about themselves is the antithesis to what an educational institution should stand for. And it's disrespectful to this parent who believes that all children have rights. And while I may have questions at times about what's going on, it causes me to seek to understand. Our students and community members deserve a board that models respect and sound decision-making. And I urge this board, with the remainder of my time, to vote no on this motion. Thank you.
Next is Dylan, Dylan Christian from Edison.
Hello, my name is Dylan Christian. My municipality is Edison, New Jersey. I am a cisgender queer male, and I'm going to be reading a letter that was sent by Rashmi Ashwin and Ashwin Subramanyam to the Edison Board of Education. Our younger one identifies as a boy since 2020. Last year, socially as well as in school, he began using the he/him pronouns. He completed middle school and started high school this year. There were, there was a marked difference in his engagement in academic, social, and extracurricular activities when he could freely express and share his real self. He's back to his bubbly personality, has good friends, and looks forward to pursuing his passion in photography. Acceptance, understanding, and complete support at school and in local community are crucial for our kids who spend so much time there each day. Despite state guidelines, policies, our kids face a lot of bullying, and we need to, we need to be doing much more to protect them rather than repealing existing protections. We urge school administrators, staff, and fellow parents to support our kids in the difficult journey to fulfill their dreams and lead productive lives. Sincerely, Rashmi Ashwin and Ashwin Subramanyam, voting no to repeal policy 5756. Thank you.
Jamie Zug from Princeton.
Hi, my name is Jamie Zug. Princeton's my business address. I live in Bordentown, New Jersey. Good evening, President Patel and members of the board. I am an attorney. I'm transgender. My pronouns are he, they. I want to start with two important caveats. I've had the opportunity to present a number of times on policy 5756, but I'm not a school law attorney, and I welcome correction on anything that I say tonight from any school law attorneys. Second, this is going to be very boring and extremely neutral, so I apologize for putting everybody to sleep. But I wanted to provide a little bit of clarification about policy 5756 so that the board can make an informed decision tonight. First, revoking policy 5756 will not cause parental notification regarding the gender identity of any students. I think that there's often a misconception that is voiced in board meetings regarding policy 5756. A board member will be very concerned about parental notification, will be highly motivated to have parents notified regarding their children's gender identity. And for that reason, we'll seek to revoke policy 5756, seemingly without clarification that that result will not happen with the revocation of policy 5756. All revoking policy 5756 does is remove policy 5756. It doesn't achieve anything other than that. For that reason, if, if, in considering how you are going to vote tonight, if one thing you are hoping to accomplish is to have parents receive notice in connection with their children's gender identity, I urge you to consider abstaining or voting against revocation because you will not be able to achieve what you are intending to achieve. Second, there's litigation, as has been mentioned a few times, pending regarding parental notification and policy 5756. Right now, that litigation is pending in two statewide fora. It's pending in the appellate division of the Superior Court of New Jersey. There's oral arguments scheduled for that. On November 19th, it's going to be livestreamed. We can all watch it. The decisions from the appellate division are binding statewide. Additionally, litigation is pending on the parental notification issue in the Office of Administrative Law. That's another statewide forum, its related litigation. So with those two points in mind, I'd like to take this opportunity to reframe what's at stake here tonight. This is a low-stakes vote. This vote does not need to be and should not be along ideological lines. A vote against revoking policy 5756 does not mean that you are against parental notification. You can support parental notification and vote no tonight. It should not be understood as such by the, by the community. I think that every member of this community expects this board to make informed decisions that make good use of their, of their resources. And I urge the board to consider voting in terms of what you, what you seek to accomplish tonight. And if you're not sure what revoking policy 5756 would accomplish, I urge you to consider abstaining or voting against revocation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Reverend Dr. L.L. Duprel.
Good evening. I am Reverend Dr. L.L. Duprel. I'm retired United Church of Christ clergywoman, but I'm not here to talk about anything religious. I wanted to talk to you about my experience as a high school drama coach and for several years right here in Edison, New Jersey. Sorry, Highland Park, New Jersey. I'm sorry. It's very late, I know. In my role as a high school English teacher and drama coach at both J.P. Stevens and also Woodrow Wilson Middle School, it was a great joy to watch young people grow and blossom and become fully themselves. And as the drama coach, I had a lot of opportunity to work very closely with these young people. And as you can imagine, many of them confided in me serious secrets that they had in their hearts as their personalities grew. And I have to tell you about one young man named Joe. At that time, he was Joe. He came into my office one day and he sat down and he said, "I'm going to tell you something, and after I tell you, you're not going to like me anymore." I said, "There's nothing you can tell me that would do that." And it turned out that Joe was dealing with his identity, and he had no safe place to go. He had been self-medicating, and he was perilously close to harming himself or committing suicide. Had I been required to tell someone about that confidence, one of two things would have happened. If Joe knew he was not safe confiding in me, he would not have told me, and this beautiful young human being would no longer be on this earth. The other thing that might have happened is if he told me and then I told his parents, to whom he was very frightened, telling, then that trust that I had built with him would have been irrevocably broken. His parents would have acted out against him, and again, this young person would no longer be on this earth. And so from personal experience and many other experiences of young people sharing not only their gender identity and their orientation with me, but also all the little delightful things in their lives that I was privy to, please don't take that away from teachers. If the students feel they cannot trust their teachers to keep their confidences, barring, of course, self-injury, then you're taking away not only a student's safety, but one of the main reasons we teach. You're a wonderful Board of Education for sitting here so long this evening, and I do thank you for listening.
Next is Cindy Ma.
My name is Cindy Ma. I'm from Edison, and it would be like a little helpful if you guys mentioned what number, because you know, like, I think I'm number 44, right? Thank you. Anyway, you know, a lot of people have, you know, on this podium, they said so many statistics, but there's statistics on other sides about, you know, like, children committing suicide and, you know, because they're, you know, it's because they're confused, okay? Children need their parents, and I think what a lot of people are saying is using this as, oh, your parents will, you know, like, disagree with them, the parents will be angry with them. You know, there are exceptions, but generally, parents love their kids. You know, so basically, what people are, I keep saying, is that if parents disagree with their kids, they're wrong, and that they will abuse their kids, and they will reject their kids. I think that's a lie, okay? So, you know, I just feel like we cannot make rules. So whatever child feels that they are right, we should make rules for that, and we should protect the child. I mean, children at a certain age, okay, their brain is not developed until they're 25, okay? So, you know, if they feel their parents... How many people have grown up and their parents have never, you know, have disagreed with their parents? So we should make a policy for that because they disagree with the parents? And, you know, it doesn't make sense. And there's so many psychologists and studies that show that children eventually grow out of the gender dysphoria. In fact, there's so many people, there's hospitals in England who ban child-affirming care because of all the lawsuits of the, you know, depression, suicide comes from, you know, all the puberty blockers and all the medication that these children have, you know, are taking to help affirm them supposedly, okay? Parents in general are there to love their parents regardless if, you know, if they're confused, if they choose to change their gender. Parents are there for their children. Parents cannot be kept in the dark because of that. And, you know, it's God-given constitutional rights for parents to be involved. And when parents are policy 5756, basically, it's anti-parent, okay? And it's just like, in September 30th, you abolished this policy, and it's basically just common sense, allow parents to be parents and not discriminating parents because they disagree with their child, okay? And people keep saying that policy 5756 never had any, when it was put in there, there was, you know, forced in there, there was never any public input. It went under the radar, and now that it has been tried to repeal, now that you have to have a second vote, I feel like this is not fair, you know, because of this second vote. And also, you know, it went underneath the radar. So, you know, now that it's trying to repeal, there's so much intimidation involved with all these statistics about, you know, kids being kicked out of their homes, being homeless, and being fearful. Children, teenagers, will go through this with their parents, and their parents will lovingly love them through this. You cannot, and children's feelings should not be their god. They should not worship their feelings. You know, they need people, they need, you know, love is not love, okay? God is love. So if they have any deviation, it's because of the internal truths that's given within them. So I hope that, you know, that the board members who voted to, you know, to revoke this policy, that, you know, that you will be considered an honor to be persecuted for what doing was right and on the side of truth. You stand on your convictions as you vote, and the next generation will thank you. And I also sent you a video, which, you know, there's so much evidence of people detransitioning, so much evidence. They were saying, they were asking adults, "Where were you when I made this mistake?" They have so many people who's regretted it. This, you know, and again, like in England, the trans-affirming care has been banned, they've been lawsuit, and I sent you a video of this policy hijacked her daughter. It puts a wedge between her and the parents, and she had to fight to get her daughter back, okay? So I feel like, you know, the next generation is worth fighting for. Thank you for your time. Thank you for, you know, being strong and doing what's right.
Thank you. Dan Fanny? Dan Fanny? Are you Dan Fanny?
Okay, good evening. Dan Fanny Kolznek. As I started out before, I do appreciate and thank each one of you for serving your community. So I have heard an awful lot about how dangerous parents are. I really didn't know it was that bad, and I think we need warning labels. Folks, I am also concerned about children's safety, and I think you are doing the right thing in repealing 5756. What started out as online influence turned into a social contagion and now is a large movement. The problem is, we are talking about children, minor children, and this policy doesn't distinguish between five-year-olds or 15-year-olds. Yet, in the policy, we are to affirm without question, without diagnosis or any other criteria, their feelings-based ideas about gender, when they can't possibly even understand what they haven't experienced. Kids are very impressionable, and they are in fact being groomed by mostly adults who want to live vicariously through our young children while claiming to be looking out for their best interests and their rights. Actually, all these here feeling threatened by 5756 should be imploring you to get rid of it because it is very divisive and is a basis for resentment from other kids and in other ways. In the military, differences are stripped away from the first day of boot camp to focus on what is in common, to build a team. I could go on about that, about why and how that is, and some of the psychologists in here should look into that area of their field. We already have the lad, we have anti-bullying. All kids should be treated with the same respect and the same privileges. This policy was ill-advised, inappropriate, and unconstitutional. It is harmful on several levels, but especially by infringing on parental rights, roles, and responsibilities. These are inalienable rights. They are not negotiable. I hope and pray you stay the course. It was never mandatory, and it's not helpful. And I understand that you've been put in a very difficult position because of the way this policy was disseminated and that people don't fully understand what the policy is and what it isn't and what the implications of it are. But it is not a threat to the LGBTQ community to have a school environment without another separate policy because we need to bring kids together, we need to have mutual respect, and we need to have a focus on academic excellence and education and teach kids how to learn, not what to think. Thank you very much.
Tasmin, Tasmin Weissgerber.
I'm loud, I don't want that to be too loud. Okay, good evening. My name's Tasmin Weissgerber. I accept she/her pronouns, and I live in Hightstown, New Jersey. I also work at Rutgers University and have been in the field of sex ed for a decade. I train educators and other professionals as well as parents across the country, but most of my work is right here in New Jersey, including teaching schools how to be inclusive of their queer students and covering the nuances of policy 5756. This district has multiple times asked me to provide education to students and PD to teachers. I also happen to be a graduate from right here at Edison High after 13 years in the public school system. So you can imagine just how upset I was when I learned that my home district was trying to illegally rescind policy 5756. I always considered a privilege that I grew up in Edison because of its rich diversity and acceptance. I had lots of queer friends growing up, and it was a wonderful experience. I've been working with districts across the state that are going above and beyond the policies like 5756, and so it's very disappointing to know that my home district is trying to go backwards. We need to protect our students. It is clear that by being here tonight or sitting on the board, you all care deeply about your children and want to protect them. After all, that is supposed to be the point of trying to remove this policy. What many are struggling to grasp is that the confidentiality piece is not a requirement. So if your kids know that you love them unconditionally, you don't have to worry. I ask that you think about the children and families the policy was intended for. Children and families whose parents won't accept their trans child and will become emotionally and/or physically abusive, neglectful, or just kick them out on the street. We don't want to think about that happening, but unfortunately, the reality is that it does. Transgender youth face some of the highest rates of bullying, harassment, sexual assault, homelessness, physical and psychological abuse at home, as you all have heard the statistics tonight, so we need to protect our students. Prior to 2019, when this policy was passed by the over 600 school districts in New Jersey, I was providing a professional development, and a teacher shared that he had a student struggling with their identity and decided to call the parent, who he knew well, in the hopes that they could work together to help that student. So the teacher made that phone call home, and the next day, that student showed up to school with a black eye. I don't know about you all, but I don't know if I could live with myself knowing that I was the reason that a child was harmed. So we can protect our students by trusting that they know their home life better than we do because they do. School counselors share with me that the majority of trans students do involve their families. The students who choose not to are usually fearful of how their guardian might react or already know they would not be accepted. By denying our students the ability to have at least one space where they can confide in a trusted adult and get to experience their school day in a way that makes them feel comfortable in their own skin, we are harming our students. If you're thinking they can just wait until they're older, we have significant research that prove that social acceptance for transgender youth significantly improves mental health outcomes and reduces suicidal ideations and attempts. We also know that young people, there was a research study put out back in 2021 following young people who socially transitioned at the elementary school level. They were followed for five years, and close to 98% of them maintained their trans identity at the end of five years. So no, this is not simply a phase or something that they will grow out of. Edison Township has an Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, whose mission is to ensure that all students feel safe, welcomed, and included in school. They also aim to foster a welcoming and supportive environment where all members of the school feel valued, heard, and seen. Preventing students from being their true selves when they spend the majority of their time in school is not allowing students who need it the most to be seen or heard. It's silencing them. The attempt to change these policies is purely political and is not motivated by a desire to help young people. In fact, it was very clear, the only research done on policy 5756 was whether you all could get away with rescinding it instead of learning about trans youth and their needs. I have also provided training for Board of Eds across the state and would be happy to provide a training free of cost to ensure that this board actually understands the policies that it's voting on. And if you do decide to rescind this policy, as others have mentioned, there will be legal consequences, and for the taxpayers here, that means taxpayer money being wasted on legal fees. And we saw the presentation earlier that showed that homeless students and students living in poverty, those rates are going up. So that money should be prioritized for helping them. If you want to make sure that your child won't keep their gender identity from you, then make sure that you're a parent that your child feels safe coming out to. Thank you.
Latisha from Menalapan.
Good evening, members of the Board and community. My name is Latisha Krubau. I live in Menalapan, and I'm a former resident of Edison. My daughter attended Edison schools. I volunteered for over a decade as a domestic violence response advocate and trainer for Edison and Metatchen, and I currently volunteer with CASA of Middlesex County as a court-appointed special advocate for children who have been removed from their homes due to abuse or neglect. I'm here tonight as a strong supporter of transgender rights. I want to speak today about the essential role that our schools play in creating safe, inclusive environments for all students, especially those who are transgender. As a parent, it has always been my deepest hope that my children will grow up in a world where they feel safe and supported, a world where they can express who they truly are without fear. For many students, school is a place where they can begin to understand and explore their identity in a way that may not always be possible at home. And for some transgender students, being able to keep their identity private is absolutely essential to their safety and well-being. I know that confidentiality around a student's identity... I know that confidentiality around a student's identity is often viewed as controversial. Some argue that parents should always be informed about such aspects of their child's life, but the reality is that not every child has a supportive home environment, and outing a young person before they're ready can lead to severe consequences, from emotional distress to outright rejection, homelessness, or death. In my volunteer capacities, I have seen firsthand that not every child has the privilege of a safe and supportive home with parents who will always put their children first. According to a study published in 2018, almost half of LGBTQ plus youth in state custody report they were removed, ran away, or were thrown out of their homes for reasons directly related to their identity. Transgender youth, like all young people, deserve respect, dignity, and autonomy over their own lives. They deserve a place where they can express their identity without fear that this might cause upheaval at home. And let's be clear, confidentiality doesn't take parents out of the equation entirely. It allows students to choose when and how they share their identity in a way that's safe for them. Studies have shown that when transgender youth have just one supportive adult in their life, their risk of depression and other negative mental health outcomes decreases significantly. Sometimes that one supportive adult is a parent, and sometimes it's a teacher, a school counselor, or a trusted coach, but by protecting students' privacy, we're allowing them the opportunity to find that adult and receive the support they desperately need. I urge the Board to consider the very real lives at stake, to prioritize the mental and emotional health of these young people, to uphold policies that respect transgender students' rights, to confidentiality, and to be who they are without fear, because when schools lead with understanding and compassion, they're not just protecting students' privacy, they're saving lives. Thank you.
Ron Mack.
Good evening. Thank you for working here at the Board of Education. I am saying--
Excuse me, sir, your name?
Ron Mack Olbridge. Thank you for working here and doing this, and please rescind 5756. It was not adopted by six hundred schools, as was just said, it was forced on six hundred schools as a mandatory, which was erroneous, and now that's why it's being rescinded. Somebody said, you're going to be the first to do this. To date, and this is a very partial list, here's the schools that have rescinded 5756: Hanover, Coldsnack, Old Bridge, Homedale, Howell, Lacy, Lafayette, Millstone, Sparta, Sussex Wantage, Madawan Aberdeen, Union Township, Franklin Township, Long Valley, Kineland, Bernard Township, Washington Township, Morris County, Vineland, Montague Township, Franklin Lakes Middle School, Franklin Lates High School, Monroe Township, Gloucester County, Roxbury, Bellevue, and East Brunswick. So this is not the complete list, this is just so far, and there's more coming all the time. Why is that? Why are these schools doing this? Because they have such evil intent? Or, some people keep, there's three people that have talked about litigation and legalities. Your job is to protect the children, that's your first and foremost job, and to foresee into the future with your outside counselor, your lawyers, your JD, to see what's coming down the road and where this Edison could be in just a few short years down the road. There's two elephant, there's an elephant in the room and a gorilla in the room, and it's only been mentioned once in the last five hours, each one of them. One is that we're talking about minors. A minor is under the age of eighteen, and for the last three hundred fifty years in New Jersey, the parents are responsible for the kids, whether they want to be or not, it's just the law of the land. The gorilla in the room, it's only been mentioned once, is detransitioning. This is a growing industry, it's new, it's $2.1 billion industry, transitioning. Following right behind it is legality. If you've got a pencil, you might want to write down, you can Google it, in ten minutes, anybody can. Chloe Cole, C-H-L-O-E, Chloe Cole, C-O-L-E, she spoke before Congress. She was guided this way as a minor, and then when she reached adulthood, she's come back and sued a lot of people that guided her down this road. So if you, people talking about protecting Edison from lawsuits, rescind the 5756, why do you think all these towns that I just mentioned, who each one of them has their own lawyer, outside counsel, JD, that was involved in all these decisions, why do you think they did that? Thank you.
Carl Cattavillo.
Hello. Hi, my name's Carl Cattavillo, I'm an Edison resident. Good evening, ladies, gentlemen, and non-binaries of the Board. You've actually heard from my younger brother, Kevin, he was one of the letters that was read to you, but I stand here as both a former student of the Edison school system, third grade through twelfth, and also as a father of a current student. My son attends Thomas Jefferson Middle School, and I know it's getting late, I'm sure we're all very tired. I do want to thank all these wonderful people for sharing all their opinions and making their voices heard. As a father, I'm very concerned about the direction this whole thing seems to be going. I do think your number one priority should be protecting all of your students, all of our children. I specifically moved back here to Edison when I knew I was going to be a father, so that my son could go through the same school system that I knew to be a great one. Your attitude towards your students makes me greatly, it concerns me that you can be so callous in disregarding the safety of any of our students, and especially our most marginalized students. They deserve to feel safe, just like my son feels safe, as far as I know, and if it changes in the future, I'm confident that he'll share it with me. He is not transgender, he is cisgender, but I'm confident that if he feels differently, that he would share it with me, and I'm not going to rely on the school district, his teachers, or his principals, or anyone else, to inform me of that. I think a lot of the concerned parents here who are concerned about parental rights, I have no doubt that they're also great parents to their students, to their children, and maybe they just feel like they're the ones being attacked by something like this, being on, you know, district policy, like, I'm a good parent, why are you trying to take away something, you know, from me? My children, you know, I deserve to know what's going on with my children's lives. But as many people have pointed out here, this policy is not directed towards you. I don't know if any of you actually have transgender kids or gay kids, just generally non-heterosexual children. This policy is not really for you, and you're advocating for putting children in danger, and I think that's very shameful for the Board, for the members that have already shown us that you don't care about the safety of our children by voting to repeal this last month. I think it's shameful that it takes all these wonderful people standing before you and explaining just how to be a decent person, just treat people with some empathy, some basic humanity. It's, it really should be that simple, and it's sad that these basic things that I've taught my son as he's grown up about empathy and treating people how you want to be treated, for some reason, that gets lost on a lot of us as we grow older, and I just sincerely hope that you find your way back to those very basic and human qualities that I'm sure you all have, and I sincerely hope that you consider all of that when you vote to repeal or to uphold this policy. It's very clear, unless you're completely ignoring everything that you've heard tonight, why this policy is important. If you vote to repeal it, at this point, I feel like you're being willfully ignorant or you have some kind of ulterior motive involved, and your priority is definitely not the safety of our children. I'm going to be voting later this month, and, you know, prior to today and hearing all these stories, I didn't know much about any of you guys, but now I can see who you are, and I'll let my opinion be known at the ballot box, but I do hope and pray that you do the right thing by our children, and, yeah, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Yash Balaji. Yash Balaji. Deepa Patial. Shilpa Kulkarni.
Hello. Excuse me. Good evening, members of the Edison Board of Education, parents, and community members.
Excuse me, excuse me, your name and where you live?
Yeah, I'm coming to that right away. My name is Shilpa Kulkarni, I am a Livingston mom and president, co-founder of a local nonprofit, Shiv's Third Eye. Shiv's Third Eye works in the space of youth mental health and LGBTQ allyship. I'm speaking here tonight as a mother of fourteen-year-old teenage gay son, Shiv, who we lost to suicide. You haven't heard, you have heard a number of appeals so far to reconsider the repealment of Policy 5756 in your school district. I support that, and I would like to start with Shiv's story. My son Shiv was one of the most gifted in academics, talented in music, sports, and well-liked by his students, his peers. All in all, a picture of poster child that most South Asian parents would love to have. So at the age of fourteen, when we got exposed to the internal struggle with his sexuality and his mental health, we were confused, apprehensive, and ill-prepared. We gave him all the support we could during that time, but we simply didn't understand or appreciate the nuances of his reality. We were learning and learning fast, but we obviously were limited by our knowledge, our upbringing, and what we were exposed to. We had given him the help from various providers, psychologists, psychiatrists, different kinds of therapists, CBT, DBT, yoga therapy, hypnotherapy, dance therapy, multiple puja's too, which my South Asian friends would understand, and some more, but in July of 2021, eight to nine months after he was outed accidentally through his phone to us, we lost him. We suffered the most horrific, unimaginable, painful loss, and our lives have been shattered forever. This is short, in short, our story. Why am I telling this story to a room full of strangers? Because I hope it helps to bring the message of what is at stake, because I wish I was exposed to queerness and understood it before it came home. Maybe my child would have felt confident in himself, and maybe he would have been here to talk to you all. I can't bring him back, but the only thing I can do is talk to all the parents like you and hope you would understand and hope there is no other Shiv. Now let's talk about the Policy 5756. The intent of the policy is to protect students, giving them space to explore who they are without fear of being outed or judged. For some of these children, a school counselor, a trusted teacher, or simply knowing they are protected by policies like this could make all the difference between hope and despair. I understand that as parents, it is natural, for most of South Asian parents, I would say, to feel that I have every right to know what's happening in my child's life. It is natural to feel fear, fear of the unknown, fear of our child struggling, and fear of things we don't fully understand. Trust me, I have been there, but fear should not dictate the future of our children's well-being. Our love for our child is not the same as the support that we can provide for them. The child needs space and time, we have to give them that. We need to lean on experts and research that tell us what works, acceptance, support, and safety. I have heard someone say earlier, let's focus on what's important, the academics. My son was still academically excelling till the last day of his life while he was struggling. I heard, let's bring respect to the parents, for the parents back. I don't want to demand that respect, I want to earn it, and I want my child here, I do not want respect. Aren't the parents that bad, that they are, are the parents that bad is something that I heard? They are not bad, they are misinformed. If you are putting a child in a swimming lesson, and if you can't swim, which I can't, you won't insist on telling the instructor exactly how you are teaching them to swim, you would trust them. This is the same. The teachers and the counselors know how to support these children, they are really giving them emotional support and guidance and the confidence. There is no treatment or influence here, the treatment is not given by anybody. The nurse doesn't touch a child without parents' permission, so do not expect that from the teachers or the counselors. But by repealing this policy, children will not go to the counselors with the fear of being outed to their parents. I'm sorry, I'm going to run out of time, but I really implore all you parents to realize that this is not a political decision. If you guys have any questions about my experience or what I've learned, please contact me, I do not mind at all being contacted, and I really hope that you do vote no further repeal. Thank you.
Thank you, and very sorry for your loss, and wherever your son is, hopefully his soul rests in peace. Next is Vrinda Gopal Menon. No, Vrinda Gopal Menon. Sean Hyland.
Hi, thank you, Board. My name is Sean Hyland, I'm the Director of Advocacy for the New Jersey Family Policy Center. I know it's getting very late and appreciate your time this evening, and I value everyone's voices and experiences here tonight, and I agree with many of them, especially that last story we just heard. I'm sorry, Sean Hyland from the Family Policy Center, Warren, New Jersey, Warren, New Jersey, I apologize.
Nope, you're good.
But I do want to talk about the policy and the facts, and so I have a few numbers here I want to throw out to the Board this evening. One is the number four, the number four. New Jersey is ranked fourth in the nation for the worst problems of bullying in schools and online, yet for some reason, there's this false narrative out there that moms and dads are the problem, but yet the statistics show that most of the bullying and the intimidation and the hardships that youth go through when they are struggling with their gender isn't happening at home. It's happening at schools. So why are we blaming loving moms and dads for taking care of their children and trying to make them the problem and not the solution? Doesn't make a lot of sense. And intentionally keeping parents in the dark about their child's social and emotional well-being, such as their gender identity, is unethical and is dangerous. I mean, teachers are mandatory reporters. There is a division of child protection and permanency. If there's actual abuse, then you should call the State Department that handles those cases. But to keep all parents in the dark about their child's mental health and emotional well-being is, again, irresponsible and a gross violation of parental rights. Another number I want to throw out there is number 27. 27 school boards have already repealed and rescinded this policy. There's been no negative outcome to those school districts. There's been no harm to any student there. There's been no rise in abuse in those communities. These types of situations that are being presented tonight is not reflective of the 27 communities that have already repealed policy 5756. And I'm sure that won't reflect the community of Edison either, if you repeal 5756, which I urge you to do so. So there is no harm and there is no threat to repealing 5756. As our other gentleman said earlier, when it comes to legal situations, only the three school boards that tweaked or modified the policy, for some reason, got actions taken by the Attorney General. But the 27 who repealed it, no actions were taken, and even stress Esme admitted in the media that the mandatory marking on the policy was a mistake, and it was never mandatory to begin with. So there'd be no legal ramifications. And the third number is number 81, 81. According to Monmouth University polling in August of 2023, the ex-residents in New Jersey, "Do you think a parent should be notified of their child's gender identity at school if it's different than the school registration records?" 81% of New Jersey parents said yes, parents should be notified. You know why you don't have thousands of parents here tonight demanding you repeal the policy? It's because they're afraid. They're afraid of being harassed and intimidated and bullied. So they don't come out and speak their opinions, but yet they strongly urge you, overwhelmingly urge you, 81% of parents, according to Monmouth University, think parents should be notified of their child's gender identity at school when it's different than their identity at home. So I urge you guys tonight to make the final vote, repeal policy 5756, and protect the rights of parents and children. Thank you, guys.
Kim from Olbridge, Kim? Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. My name's Kim Lindley. I am from Olbridge, a former special education teacher. Okay, my name is Kim Lindley, a mom, a former special education teacher, and a resident of Olbridge. I would like to start out by saying thank you for being brave, courageous, and courageous, for keeping focus on what's best for the children. The decisions that make, that you make have long-lasting implications on the lives, on the children and families of ours, of your school district. These decisions that you decide upon will have long-lasting effects that far exceed them attending the Edison School District. The safety and academics of your student population far reaches these school walls in which they are under your care. Policy, policy 5756 has far-reaching implications on the family dynamic, student lives, and how it can alter society. Children are a gift from God who have entrusted to their parents and not of a school district. Parents are legally and morally responsible for the well-being of their children from birth to 18 years old. The basic needs of a child are provided by the parent, and if they fail to meet the basic needs, they'll be held accountable. They are there to be, they are to be inspired to learn, interact with other students and teachers. Policy 5756 creates a lack of trust between parents and teachers. Teachers who encourage clear communication lines have no, now have a barrier between them and the parent. The student is now able to make independent decisions that can and are life-altering. Division, division between the two most prominent people in a child's development are now at odds. When and how does a parent know when the teacher is telling the truth? The child is now living two separate lives, which can cause the one, the one they who they depend on for everything is in the dark, is in the dark of what is going on. A separate file, a different name, a social worker who can act in lieu of the parent and make immoral decisions, a child can determine when they want the parents to know what is going on, are just a few parts of policy 5756. Our parental rights in question. When has a child been able to make these complex decisions when the prefrontal cortex of a brain does not start developing to the age of 13? There is so much to discuss this evening, however, since it is late and I have some time, thank the Lord. One of the articles I read tonight has to do with the mom in California. Mom Went $100,000 Payout From School Over Socially Transition Daughter. A California school district has reportedly settled a lawsuit brought by a mother who said her daughter was socially transitioned without her permission for $100,000. Jessica Conan sued the Spectacles Union School District, claiming teachers at Brunna Vista Model High School have secretly encouraged her daughter Alicia, a then-11, to change her gender identity. The school forced her identification as a boy, gave her articles on how to conceal her new gender identity from her family, and put on her gender support plan, then instructed school staff to refer by a male in male pronouns, according to the Center of American Liberty, the legal group that represented them. I mean, tonight, there was so much information being thrown out, we'd be here till like tomorrow morning, which maybe probably will be. So what I decided also to share was that the brain, which was discussed. At 13, the prefrontal cortex is beginning to develop, and the hormones and the, your identity is slowly, gradually beginning. So if I can get this correct. The article which I have, which I will send, "At What Age Is The Brain Fully Developed?" Okay, what it states, "It is widely debated as to which age a brain is considered a fully mature or developed. In the past, many experts believe that the brain may have been done developing in the mid to late teens. Then along came some evidence suggests that development may last until at least 20. These days, a consensus of neuroscientists again, agree that the brain development likely persists in at least the mid-20s and possibly the 30s." So what I wanted to discuss in one of the issues is that the the complex planning of a brain. The prefrontal cortex region is responsible for complex planning. Anytime you set a goal that requires some degree of planning, your prefrontal region is at work. Planning out tasks in your day, developing a business plan, et cetera. The next portion of your brain, decision-making. When we often struggle to make good decisions when we are teenagers, but as we enter our 20s, our decision-making improves. This is due to the fact that our prefrontal cortex helps us think logically and make more calculated assessments of situations. Our brain weighs the risk and tells us whether a certain behavior or choice is a good idea versus a bad one. I had elementary school children, and the two most important people to a child is the teacher and the parents. So I can't imagine having this in there and given that responsibility to a teacher. We are educated to teach these children in various subjects, however not equipped to handle these children with dysphoria. That's why we had social workers in our classrooms that we would call on, or psychologists in development of an IEP. And the last article I just want to tell you about because it's making me like running short, is a Florida, Florida mom that filed suit. Hold on, let me say that, one second. This article, and I'll send it to you, is "Stockard Withholds Results Of Puberty Blockers: Study For Political Reasons To Report." I just don't understand when, can you submit your child to the school as a parent and you're legally responsible until they're 18? I have a 28-year-old sometimes doesn't even know what she wants to do. And so you're going to allow elementary schools to be led by their child, their teacher? It's very easily to be guided. So I just want to thank you for your time and everything this evening. That's been a late night for everybody. Thank you.
Caleb from Olbridge.
Hi, my name is Caleb Hartman. I'm 17 years old, and I am from Olbridge. First, I actually want to take some time to thank the school board. I know it's late. I know everyone here is absolutely exhausted and has work in the morning, but you guys are here and you guys are listening to us, and that's what's important. So thank you for that. But first, I actually wanted to congratulate you guys for voting to eliminate policy 5756. This policy, rather than protecting students, makes it so that parental involvement is more difficult. Repealing this policy will not somehow force queer students back into the closet and turn teachers into watchdogs who note every passing mention of their student's sexuality. Rather, it will encourage open lines of communication between students and parents. There's one thing I know about schools and public establishments having a serendipity of public library, it's that assistance and volunteering is always needed. You all work long hours and have to fill jobs you don't have to. And that contributes to a sense of stretching that I've noticed in talking to educators. Parental involvement is needed in the school system, and parental involvement can only come through trust between a student and a parent. So then, why should we expect students to be involved with this school that is withholding critical information about their child? As a school, if you pass this policy, the message you are sending to these students, parents who you are asking to be involved, is that you do not respect them and yet still want their time, attention, and money. Ultimately, that harms a student more than anything. High schoolers and people in general, we're not an island, and we deserve to have a community who knows what's going on in our lives and then who then can help and with the issues that we deal with, who are equipped to help us. We've heard a lot of people talk about a parent's responsibility and rights today. However, a parent cannot fulfill their responsibility if their rights are not upheld. Think about it this way. If I told you you needed to run a marathon and gave you no running shoes, how could you ever be expected to run a marathon? It would be difficult if you're wearing like regular shoes, a lot harder, it's still possible, but it's very hard. In that same way, how can you expect parents to effectively raise their children in the best way possible while not being privy to their children going through such a difficult process? I would also like to address the concern that I've heard, that teachers will become watchdogs waiting to report the student at the first mention of the word gay or trans. Do you really think that teachers have their best student, who have their best, students' best interests in mind, will be so cloying and demanding? Repealing this policy won't magically turn these teachers into violent bigots who run to their parents at the first sign of anything, but it will keep parents involved without the school sitting by if the student is abused. And of course, we have also heard a lot about abuse and abusive family structures, and the claim that children will be abused if policy 5757, 5756 is repealed. And I want to address that by saying that abuse does not happen because of whatever reason the abuser gives. Regardless of the reason the abuser gives, anything or, and everything will draw the anger of abusive parents. Statistically, another massive catalyst for abuse is the issue of report cards and parental notification of grades. If we were to tiptoe around all parents in fear of poking the bear of the minority of abusive parents, we would remove all rules and structure that the student could come against, including parental notification of grades. Ultimately, the school district cannot act as dithous, and despite wanting the very best for every student that comes in and out of your classrooms every single day, you as a job at school have to know that your job is to teach and to report abuse. If a student is being harmed, and that child can come to the teacher, and that teacher can report to the state as needed. In conclusion, as a teenager, where things rush by the seat of light with college applications and job interviews and term papers and all that stuff, and all the excitement of moving into adulthood, things tend to feel more complicated. I know personally, the transition to adulthood can make, has made me feel like everything's against you and you need help and assistance from others. Repealing 5756 gives you guys the unique opportunity to be the community that each student reserves, enforcing a more pronounced student, teacher, and parent relationship. Now, as a school board, it is your job to hear what we are saying and take that. And ultimately, it's your job as a school board to protect the children the best way you can. And having heard everything and having heard the way you will not be sued, the way that it is more, ultimately, more helpful to a child, well, more helpful that this policy is repealed, why would you not? Come on, guys, please. Thank you.
Jennifer Woodruff.
My name is Jennifer Woodruff, and I live in Morganville, and I'm a prior resident of Edison. First, I want to thank the board for putting up with us tonight and spending all this time and for your dedication to the town and the children. I think that there were a lot of comments made against you tonight, which were uncalled for, and the fact that I apologize for them because you shouldn't be subject to comments that if you don't repeal, if you repeal 5756, that, you know, children will commit suicide. That is just so, so unfair. We heard tonight that 5756, if it's abolished, there won't be any protection for the trans students. Well, we know that there's, as it was mentioned before, we have Title IX, we have LAD, we have HIV policies, we have DEI. I mean, how many more policies do we need? It's, it's to the point of ridiculousness. I've been to a lot of board meetings, and half the meetings are spent on HIV policies. I don't know where the academics have gone, but it seems like that has become not a priority anymore. And we have to get back to the basics. The reason I go to board meetings is because I care about the kids, and I know that it's going to be hard for some people to believe this, but it has become a social contagion. Gender dysphoria was very, very, very small percentage, and it's really blossomed. And it's because of affluent, you know, influencers on the internet, and a lot of it happened during COVID. And if people don't want to believe that and I hear snickering, it's pretty much well-documented. And a lot of these children are not confused about their gender. It's other mental health issues that need to be addressed. And I think that's very important, that children need to talk to the special people to find out what's really going on. Keeping parents in the dark is not going to help anyone. Everybody knows that when parents are involved, the kids do better academically and mentally. It's a parent's responsibility until they're a certain age that they have to take care of them, and they're responsible for them legally, anything that happens, the parents are responsible. Why is it different here? If, if the parents are abusive, or there's any kind of signs of that, usually a social worker or the police or something is sent to the home to investigate the situation. I don't know why it's different here. It's, I just feel like, at this point, there's special rights, and that's going to only cause resentment for other children in schools. We have to, we have to get back to the basics. And I say special rights because one example is the teachers are required to go with what the children say that their pronouns are, their names, and it might be against their religious beliefs, and they feel like they're being deceitful. And if they make a mistake, they could, it could jeopardize their job. And that's just not fair. I'm going to close now, but I think that you really should consider rescinding the policy as you decided before. I know that children, if they're affirmed when they're younger and as, you know, a different identity, gender identity than their birth gender, they could go on to puberty blockers and cross-sex hormones and unfortunate surgery that they'll can never turn back. And that's what I'm worried about. I think that we have to wait till they're adults to make these kind of decisions and keep the parents informed. Thank you.
Ed Sofield. We have Ed Sofield. Ed Sofield, that's you, okay.
My name's Ed Sofield. I'm from Perth Amboy. I live at 565 Colgate Avenue. I'm here because I'm representative of the union building trades. I could tell you that in 1956, our retired members, our old timers, had to go to school if they lived in Edison in Perth Amboy because you didn't have this school. We built this school. We built every school in Edison, and they're all standing rock solid. We got a problem now over there at some of these schools in Edison, the one JP Stevens, because there's some non-union contractors that got in there, and they're supposed to pay the prevailing wage rate. And we know for a fact through our studies that certified payroll that we do shows that they don't pay the prevailing wage rate. And we can't do, can't get to that point where lawyers and the State Department of Labor, until the job is done and the people have the job done, and you're not getting the best workers. You guys want the best workers, you want the best doctors, you want the best cars, you got union labor. Now, the state and the federal government has established a prevailing wage rate. They established this, and it's the rate of all the unions. That's the prevailing wage. They've established this to protect you, the public. They don't want substandard people coming here and doing the work. They don't want substandard people coming here and doing the work. They want the best people and that's why they've established the prevailing wage rate. There's a dozen, we have a dozen, 20 different union trades in this Middlesex County area. These people working over there come from Mississippi, Pennsylvania, and they're not local people. I know you people up there. You know me because I'm a local person. I worked here 40 years ago throwing the fire alarm up above here when I was a young kid. I worked in this town. And we got the steam fitters, we got the operating engineers, we got the ironworkers. We got the insulators, the tin knockers, the electricians, the plumbers, the masons, the tile, the data techs, the glazers, the roofers, and it goes on and on and on. And all our guys go to school for five years. And they don't go to school for one hour a night. They go three nights a week, all are trades, and they put in three hours a night and they work all day. We got the best people. These non-union contractors come in and they got, one guy works for two hours as an electrician, two hours as a laborer, and three hours as a roofer. And they're getting prevailing wage rate and we know it's certified, but it's too late because the job is done crap. Number two. So I just told you about, so what works for us? What works for us is project labor agreements. That assures that the unions get hired, project labor agreements. We don't care if a non-union contractor comes in and takes the bid or a union contractor. But a project labor agreement gives us the ability to have all union people out of union halls, a project labor agreement. Every town in Middlesex does it. Woodbridge, Carteret, Perth Amboy, New Brunswick. We're all project labor agreements. The county freeholders, Ron Rios in Chantiner, Hindu. They guarantee that the county college project for $300 million has a project labor agreement. It has it now. Because they want the best labor to protect our people and give the best labor and local people. I gotta keep going with this. There's no downside to project labor agreements because a non-union contractor can take it. It's up to you to put it in the bid. When you put it in the bid, they gotta bid it. If they want to be a non-union contractor, take it, but they gotta get the best people. We want a project labor agreement. We demand it. Okay, a little bit more. When you listen to these sport programs like the Yankees tonight or the Giants or the Jets, you're going to see that they're advertising union labor. They're paying $100 an hour for union labor. And that's what the non-union contractor is getting and he's putting the money in his pocket. And we know he is. We give the members, if it's $100 an hour, any of these trades, the only way it says you have to pay it. And our guys are getting medical benefits, they're getting pensions, they're getting annuities, and we're taking care of them. And the Middlesex County Building Trades supplies all the apprenticeship for your kids in here, for your daughters and your sons. These people come in here and they're not taking care of your people. We take care of Middlesex County and your people will come and work with us through an apprenticeship training program. And I, you know that we do that. Everybody can't be a cop or an engineer. You come to us, you keep with us, you stay with the union building trades. We need project labor agreements. We have to have them. Thank you.
So, Mr. Sofield. So first of all, thank you for all the energy. Thank you so much. Thank you. I would like to say that, of course, it was different from what everyone is speaking with the other thing. So everyone paid attention. Without a coffee, everyone is awake over here on both the sides. But I can, you waited for like two, three hours, whatever it is. You did not wait for nothing. Because today, in our agenda, we are having for approval the project labor agreement. For the next big school, the John Marshall School, and our BA, Mr. Toth, had proposed that in our finance committee and we have it for the board approval. Should it get approved in the next few minutes? You will have it, so. Yeah, there you go. All right, so thank you. Thank you so much and, you know, I hope that's a relief for you. All right, so we are done with the list over here. Yeah, we'll get there. So now since we're done with that list, we can go from, to call from the floor. So Mr. Mara, you want to go next? Oh, Mr. Mara spoke? Okay, all right. If he spoke, that's fine. That's great. Well, we are done, we don't see anyone on the list now, so. Any first timers, anyone who did not speak yet? Yes, sir, you can go.
Hi, this is Andy from Edison. Thank you for giving me the six minutes, but I'll, you know, I'm one of those, I'm speaking on the minority of parents which have been demonized and, you know, called bad parents or whatever. And I would request you all that, you know, schools, parents, we all need to work together. Everyone's come, said their stuff. But we need to, you know, revoke this policy, break down that wall and start working again together to build better bridges. Because this is not serving anyone. It's a lopsided policy. It doesn't protect my daughter, who's afraid to go to the toilet. You know, give proper protections for both sides. So that's all I'm trying to say. This policy needs to go so that we can have a better way of working things with collaboration from parents and everyone else. It cannot be one-sided. That's all I'm here to say. Thank you and no suggestion. Next time, give everyone three minutes. We'd be home quicker. Thank you.
All right, next for public comments. Anyone in the back remaining? Yes, you can go ahead. I'll call you next.
Thank you. My name is Gerald Macleod. I'm from Neptune, New Jersey, with the Dolores Turco Foundation. I've spoken before. We're nonprofit and we protect children from abuse, neglect, and exploitation. I'd like to begin by thanking you and applauding you for repealing 5756 and commend you for your outstanding service and commitment to the academic excellence of Edison. The Edison students significantly exceed the average New Jersey performance standards in math and English, so you are doing a pretty terrific job. I'd like to begin with a few words for our friends in the LGBT community. We are not your enemy. We are parents who love our children with all their faults and we love you too and want the best for you. Your body was designed by God with a specific plan, meaning, and purpose. He knows you intimately and loves you passionately. You do not have to change your body or anything about yourself. You just need to seek and follow God's will for your life and you will know peace, joy, and love that God has in store for you. Next, I'd like to say a couple things about the law and medical issues on this transgender policy. Thing number one, you heard, you may have heard this before, but I just want to repeat because some people may not be aware that these policies are illegal and unconstitutional. They infringe on parental rights. Just to mention one district court in California that has struck down these same transgender policies for violating the constitutional right of parents. The decision of the judge was that outing students, they were not outing students, it was a parent's right to make decisions concerning the care, custody, control, and medical care of their children as one of the oldest and most fundamental liberty interests that Americans enjoy. And the overwhelming binding law from Supreme Court, state and federal, demands that parents be apprised and have access to all information concerning their children. And that's because under legal precedent, parents, not the state, are presumed to act in the children's best interest. You heard a couple of cases. I just want to bring out another on conversion therapy, which seemed to be, I guess, talked down about. However, the, in the city of Tampa, they paid $950,000 in damages for banning conversion therapy because banning conversion therapy was unconstitutional. Just going to point out a couple of recent laws that, since my letters to you, I know I wrote a couple. Just in the past couple of weeks, a Virginia school settled a $575,000 lawsuit to a Christian teacher who was fired for refusing to use self-declared pronouns of a trans identified student. In California, another teacher was paid $360,000 in a settlement for refusing to comply with the same transgender pronouns. And just one other interesting case, another freedom of religion. These are freedom of religion issues. $7.8 million to six former employees in San Francisco who were denied religious accommodations over COVID shots. And the company paid a very heavy price for intolerance and lack of sensitivity to religion. Just a couple updates on the medical issues. You've seen a lot in my former letters, but over the last couple of weeks, some new things have happened. A very disturbing report two weeks ago covered the horrific truth that 14,000 minors in the US have undergone transgender surgery and treatments, generating $120 million for doctors and hospitals. And according to medical, America's frontline doctors, this has become a multi-billion dollar industry, quote, "driven by ideologies and greed", where doctors are performing grotesque procedures on minors who cannot possibly comprehend the lifelong consequences of these gender-affirming treatments. And another alarming fact that came to light just a couple of days ago was a Dr. Kennedy, who heads the largest youth gender clinic in the US at the LA Hospital, Children's Hospital in LA, withheld the results of a study on puberty blockers because it showed no positive mental health effects for gender dysphoric children who use them. Just another one or two points that I wanted to make. The parents, as you have heard, are the most important protective factor in preventing risky and harmful behaviors for children. And separating children from their parents makes them more vulnerable to predators. And according to Tim Ballard, some of the tactics of pedophile networks are now promoted in schools. Separate children from parents. The state knows best. Sexualize kids. Freedom of Reading Act, I think it was. Take God out of education and let children consent to dangerous, life-changing surgeries, which makes it easier to accept a child consenting to sex when in fact, they're being raped and exploited. And one of the goals of the World Health Organization is to normalize and legalize pedophilia. Okay, well, thank you so much for the opportunity. I covered the facts. But I very much appreciate your position.
You can go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kylie Dunne. I'm from Old Bridge. But I do spend a lot of time in Edison and not the least of which was recently at the Edison Pride Festival, which was held by the municipality. And it perplexes me why I'm here tonight, not in the sense that I am somebody who will come out to people who need my help in the surrounding community who are LGBT and allies and be sure that there are people to speak for them. But because in a town like this, this is not where I would have thought that an appeal or repeal would be attempted. The Edison that I have always known, growing up around this area, is an Edison that respects diversity, that protects diversity, and that protects vulnerable people. So I have to say how disappointed I am in this board, as are, I know, many other of my friends who have attended Edison schools, who are living here in Edison, families. And I ask you to listen to those families who have been present this evening. If you look to see just how many families have come out and asked you to not repeal this policy far outweighs the ones who have asked you to repeal it. And that is because Edison, again, as I said, is a community that by its population wants people to be safe. And, you know, you chose this, right? This was a policy that was on the book for years. You chose this. We're sitting here, it's 11:30 at night. I want to say good evening, board, but I could almost say good morning. You knew this was coming. You tried to push it through the first round without the public being ready to come and comment. But you brought this. You brought the lady who just spoke saying that teachers are pushing pedophilia. That is your fault. You knew this was going to come here when you did this. And if you care about not sowing division in your community, if you can't bring yourself to not vote to repeal this policy, I ask at least that you abstain. You know, before I came here, almost literally half a day ago to this meeting, you know, I saw such a horrendous ad on television. Again, promoting the same insane ideology that people who are trying to be themselves are inherently indoctrinating others to be them. And it was an ad that was so disgusting, a political ad that was so disgusting, that the network actually prefaced it by saying, "We're legally obligated to show this to you." That's how bad it was. I have never in my life seen an ad that was so nasty that the network had to say, "We're legally obligated to show this to you." And we all live within that context, don't we? So why now? You know what a crazy election year this is. You know what's going on in our communities in terms of the division that's being sown. Why in Edison, New Jersey, of all places, are you going to now promote this division by bringing up an issue that was not an issue? That hasn't been an issue? I, I don't think you can understand the ramifications of what you're doing unless you've lived it yourself, unless you've been an LGBT teenager who's had to been the victim of bullying. But if you can't share that perspective, I ask that you at least share your own self-interest. If I were in your shoes right now, I would not be presenting forward in a town like this something where my neighbors would look at me in the way that I vote on this and think that I would be a hateful person. I'm not saying that you are a hateful person by bringing this up. And not for nothing, some of the parents here, not everybody, but some of the, actually, very few parents, I should say, some of the speakers who are here. I don't think necessarily all of them mean harm, even though certainly some of them do. And I don't necessarily think that you mean harm. But the perception nonetheless will be, to your community, not just to the taxpayers, not just to the voters, but to the people you see in the grocery stores, right? The people you bring your to, you know, you have to interact with when you take your kids to their soccer game. They're going to look at you, some of these people, and they're going to think that you're a bigot. Whether or not that you are a bigot, they are going to think that. And that is not something that I would want to live with. That is not something that I would want to dredge up. And I, I don't understand why you would want to put that kind of a social target on your back. Because that's the reality of what you're doing here. I, I, as I said, if you can't take it upon yourself to vote to not repeal this policy, please at least abstain. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to end public comments on resolutions? Mrs. White?
Second.
Mr. Schneider? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, the public comments on resolutions have now ended. If I'm hoping here, and I'm assuming as well, the board members will have something to say in regards to the vote on the policy. Before we go there, unless any board member objects, we can finish the other resolutions and then I can open up through the board members' comments on the policy. If we don't hear any objections, then finish the other things and we'll open up before we vote on the policy. So that being said, motion to approve personal report.
Motion.
Mr. Schneider?
Second.
Mr. Romano? Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Iver.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Vice President Romano.
Yes.
President Patel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is motion to approve administration, curriculum, and instruction and pupil special services reports.
Motion.
Mr. Romano? I'll second it. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
I'm sorry, who's the second by, Mr. Romano?
Myself.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Iver.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider. Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is motion to approve finance reports.
I'd like to make that motion.
Mr. Romano?
Second.
Second, Mr. Schneider? Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That finishes board's regular business, except the policy resolution. Before I open up for board members' discussion and comments, Mr. Toth, if you can read the resolution once.
Yes, hang on one second. No, I got it in my board docs, hang on one second. Okay. Whereas on September 30th, a motion was offered from the floor about Policy 5756 by a board member. Whereas in accordance with the Edison School District Policy 0131, such motion requires, by policy, a second reading. Therefore, be resolved that the board now considers for second reading the abolishment of Policy 5756 in accordance with the September 30th, 2024 motion that was moved on the, on the floor by the, by a board member.
Thank you, Mr. Toth. I am going to open it up, open up for board members' discussion.
Needs to be a motion and second before discussion. Correct.
Okay, so we can do a motion and second?
Yes, a motion.
Motion by Mr. Romano?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schneider? Let's open it up for board member discussion.
Seeing none, motion to close.
Roll call.
Nobody wants to do a discussion, I'm going to read statements. So as many of you are aware, last month, this came up on the floor, and as the resolution pretty much reads like that. And at that time, after that, Dr. Alderelli issued a statement. I issued a statement on the website, which says, "The po, policy needs multiple readings," and that's what brings us here, for, in today's agenda. And I believe, in accord, in accordance with the statement that I had issued and Dr. Alderelli had issued, "The decision on this matter needs to be fully researched and well-informed." I myself spent the month of October, I'm not running for any kind of elections here, so I did spend quite some time doing a lot of research on this issue. And myself spoke with several groups, pro, 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 opinions, and gather perhaps a lot of new information. Personally, I believe so many in the community, from what I have, saw, has largely misinterpreted or has been misinformed about the policy. Some people don't even know what the policy is. And they say, "It takes away parental rights." I don't think it's just taking away, it's about taking away rights, there is a lot beyond it. And some of the speakers mentioned that. And I absolutely and firmly believe that parents are ultimately responsible for their child and their behavior and their upbringing, and must be kept informed in everything that has to do with the child. Those who object to the continuation of the policy are all the parents, who I know, may be taking responsibility very seriously and want to work with the district to shape and grow their children and develop policies or have something in place which protects their children. Nobody means harm to their children. I also know those who strongly support the continuance of this policy are doing so in the belief and understanding that not every child is, uh, lucky to have such a parent. They believe that the policy was designed to protect the children. In my opinion, it is imperative that the board and community have a full understanding of how the policy is implemented and its ramifications of removing before any action is taken. This is information that, at that time during the last board meeting, we simply did not have. We don't have the information now. I don't know how many board members spoke with Superintendent Dr. Alderelli between last month, September 30, and then October 29. I spoke with him at length. I researched into it. This gentleman, sitting right of me, he's a superintendent of the school, he runs the district, and whatever action the board takes from tomorrow, it becomes his responsibility. The staff members sitting here, they did express their concern that they do not have a guidance should the policy be revoked. Does that mean we should keep the policy? Well, that's also not the answer here. We need clear stakeholder input, and this came up from multiple speakers today. We need, I am a very big believer of stakeholder input. It is essential that all the stakeholders, including the school staff, parents, students, administrators, board members, and the community members be able to contribute to the discussion. It must not be rushed. It must not occur behind closed doors, but it must however happen in the sunshine as a community. I cannot more strongly recommend that there be appropriate analysis and research done prior to a final vote is taken. Otherwise, this can keep coming back again, whether it's repeal or not repeal, or board can keep changing policies, keep voting on it again. This can impact lives, and we cannot take such a decision very lightly. There may, this may be difficult in the face of oncoming national election, but we must remember that we are here to represent and care for Edison, and specifically the needs of students. We must reflect inward and ensure that any decision we make is not one of outside influence, but one we can support in our own district and the one we can support on our own merits and reasoning. Remember, there is a reason school district is supposed to be nonpartisan. Now, in an effort for transparency to the public, please be advised that the position, this position is not the one that I came in, you know, I'm reading, I'm just stating my views here. But we, it came up last time, Mr. Rivera also mentioned last time that there has been discussions in the policy committee, and an attorney had been involved in the policy committee. The attorney had provided permission to disclose what happened within the policy committee, the discussions with the whole board, and the full board has been sent documents of in the meeting minutes. And with the attorney's permission, attorney has advised that the Board Policy 0155 charges the policy committee with conducting studies and making recommendations to the full board in its advisory capacity in the area of policy. Considering that the motion in question did not come as a recommendation from the policy committee, it is our, meaning the attorney's, opinion that the proper procedure in response to an action from the floor to abolish, adopt, or revise or any policy is to refer the item back to the policy committee for due consideration. Once the policy committee have had the opportunity or has the opportunity to properly give a proposal of full analysis and provide their opinion, it could then go back to the full board for second reading, the final discussion, and the full board vote. This is an, the opinion from the attorney clearly stating there should be work in the policy committee and along with the superintendent, because the policies come, correct me, Dr. Alderelli, if I'm wrong here, in conjunction with the superintendent. The policy committee just does not work on themselves. They also, superintendent is one of the most important part of it. In the light of that guidance, I firmly believe, seeking the stakeholder input, have the policy committee thoroughly review it, and a decision should be made after that. And policy committee, in my opinion, should also strongly consider stakeholder input, because then, again, it's the board members. So, however, you know, can work with the attorneys and design that, design that methodology, or, but input is very important. We should not be making decisions here out of listening to just few, few people here. Once a proper analysis is made and the report is produced, ideally, only then the board should decide whether to repeal the policy or whether to possibly modify the policy or come up with something new. Now, those are the discussions that can have, but before even taking input from the stakeholders, before even discussing in the policy committee, this is just done with very limited information and not complete information, in my, in my opinion. So I would really direct the policy committee to look into this matter with the attorney. I know the discussions are going on, but this, it's not the end of it. So I feel the lack of appropriate information, understanding for, does not, is, is not there at this moment for all the board members. And hopefully, you know, everyone makes their right decision. Thank you.
So, so what's the timeline for it, right? So, I mean, I asked the policy committee to look into it in June. It's been five months. There's no update on it, right? So I understand, you're saying, you know, per lawyer, it has to be led by policy committee and put on a floor by the policy committee. But is there a timeline?
Right, absolutely.
You cannot keep dragging this for years, and it's not something new. I, I brought it up along with Sean Pang last year. So whoever thinks it's political, it's not. We've been working on it for years, but then people keep dropping it. When, when the board keeps changing, policy committee keeps changing, and then people are dropping it. So I would appreciate if you can set some kind of timeline to come up with a resolution.
I agree absolutely, and the board should work on it, work on it as the highest priority. Like I said, I myself did a lot of research and work with Dr. Alderelli. I'm not the chair of policy committee. Mr. Rivera, if you want to weigh in, you can respond to Mr. Vishal Patel, or I would still direct the policy committee to.
You've met a couple, you're asking the policy committee to meet again. It's going to be the same four people that heard the same four messages twice already. So to me, we need to make a vote.
You have any more questions?
I would like to make.
I mean, make a vote, I mean.
Yes, Mrs. Peng.
Mine is going to be very short. Is there any recommendation from the policy committee?
You all have the same information. Everybody read it. Everybody reads the news, everybody knows what's going on, everybody's got every document. Make a decision.
I just thought the purpose of having a committee is to do more research and give a recommendation, but.
Several times.
Okay.
Not going to change.
Okay. I, I just want to stress, you know, repealing 5756 does not undermine LGBT rights. We have other laws to protect LGBT rights. And repealing it, it doesn't even mean that the school must tell the parents. It actually just give the school the flexibility to deal, to handle this case by case. And I totally trust that our staff would be dealing with these unique cases appropriately, just like, just as they have been doing before this policy was introduced in 2019. The, the staff are not lost, the system is working, and parents, while kept in the loop, could help their children every step of the way. So.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Romano.
The policy's been in effect since 2019. Is that accurate? I made a motion.
A second.
The policy, the policy's working. Let it stay. I let it stay. What is the problem? You know, I, nobody's going to change my mind. That's the way it's going to be. Now, I'll make a motion again. Maybe, would you like, I'll go to the podium, and I'll make the motion from the floor. The fact of the matter is, we know about this, we've gotten information. We actually got three pages, what, actual documentation. And they recommended to leave it alone. Don't amend it, don't rewrite it, don't play games with it. Now, there are, there are litigation that's working through the system. Leave the system do their job. It's not our job to take and to twiddle with it. Let the courts do what they do. That's what, that's what the information that we received. You want to play with something? So, all I want to know is, is, I'm going to make a motion. I want to accept this as a motion, and I want to vote. Just, just leave it alone. No.
All right, Mr. Romano? So, uh, yeah, very soon, but I did, I did need at the board member comments. And so I don't know why motion came in between, but we did ask for advice. Yeah, so that's why I did wanted to intend to open to board member comments. And because sometimes board members speak in between the roll calls, so I wanted to leave all those aside, and then everyone was, yes, no, abstain, whatever way they want to. Just want to get this over with. And then, one of the things I want to clarify, because this is not a light issue. And Mr. Rivera said, yes, everyone has the document from the policy committee, and I also have the permission from the attorney. It's the whole thing, we don't need to read the whole thing. But in that meeting, the attorney's office recommended option one, there were three options. When it comes to controversial, highly contentious public issues, in this instance, the Edison Board of Education is sitting within the majority of other school district by keeping the current policy in place, having the luxury of watching and observing the ongoing litigation related to the issue while being able to rely on the recommended practice of the state. And it speaks about, if the state is victorious, EBO's position has remained in good standing with the recommendation of the state, that's what the attorney's recommendation was from the policy committee. An attorney, this time around, after we consulted the attorney, attorney has asked to work this, well, again, whether to keep the policy, repeal the policy, or make our own policy, anything should go, come from the policy committee, and then the board should vote on it, that's attorney's recommendation. I'm done with my comments. Unless anyone has anything else, we can take a roll call. Right, roll call, Mr. Toth?
Okay.
There was, there was motion.
I, I second.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Everybody understand what's going on.
Yeah.
It's a vote, it's a vote to abolish the policy. Correct, the motion was made by, by Mr. Romano and seconded by Mr. Schneider. We're going to call a roll on.
So to be clear, attorney, it's, um, a yes vote would be to abolish it, a no vote would be to leave it alone. Thank you.
Ready?
Roll call.
Mr. Lugo?
No.
Ms. Angina Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
No.
Mr. Schneider?
No.
Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
No.
President Patel?
No.
Motion fails.
So next is, we'll move on to committee reports. Mrs. White, Township Liaison Committee.
Okay, the Township Board of Edelie Exon Committee was held on Tuesday, October 8, 2024, at the Education Center. The meeting began at 11:00 a.m. and ended at 11:50. In attendance in person were Mayor Sam Joshi, Mayor's Chief of Staff Bob Deal, Assemblyman Rob Karabincheck, Assemblyman's Chief of Staff Stephanie McClary, Superintendent Dr. Alderelli, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Huss, Business Administrator John Toth, Director of Security Patrick Cassine, BOE Members Dr. Schneider, Angina Patel, and Virginia White. Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief of Police Bob Dudesch, Councilman A.J. Patel, and BOE Member Brian Rivera were in attendance via Zoom. We began the meeting with Mayor Joshi, who provided some insight and following updates. The Edison Fire Department sent personnel to assist with hurricane relief for storm-ravaged areas in Florida and the Carolinas. The possibility of widening the street to improve traffic flow on Jackson Avenue, which would affect Herbert Hoover Middle School. Sidewalk enforcement is moving forward. A pre-K grant is being worked on by Senator Diagnon's office. Regarding the expansion of the Mini B Veal Community Center, the gym upgrade has been completed, and they're moving, moving forward with other upgrades. The successful opening of the Splash Park, you know, worked out very well this summer. Pedestrian activated crossing signs were placed. The town has installed approximately 120 signs so far. Assemblyman Karabincheck provided insight on several bills, including the following, bills impacting the. Bills impacting the preschool program, updating building lease laws, this is big factories, extending the maximum time for a lease from five years to twenty years. A bill proposing coaches' stipends to be included as pensionable money for retirees for multiple sport coaches. Deputy Chief Dudas shared the following information. Herbert Hoover Middle School, Jackson Avenue, traffic issues continue to be a work in progress. John Adams Parking on New Dover Road is improving and being monitored. Crossing guards are currently fully staffed and posts are well covered. Pedestrian activated crossing signs are still being placed where needed. The majority of these signs have been placed around our schools. Respectfully submitted, Virginia White. But I did want to add this. Stephanie McClary, the Chief of Staff for, um, for Assemblyman Karabincheck, provided additional information and state, uh, resources to us and they were forwarded to administration who afforded, who then forwarded them to the proper areas, which, you know, she really sent a really good list. And that's it for me. Thank you very much. And the whole place cleared out. What a report, right?
Thank you, Mrs. White. Mr. Vishal Patel for Athletic Committee.
Yep, hello. The, the meeting happened on October nine at four PM and in attendance were Vishal Patel, Virginia White, Sean Pang, Chris Huss, Dave Sendl, and Dal, Dalpata. Basically, there was introduction of Mr. Dalpara as, as an interim athletic supervisor. We discussed the middle school sports schedule. Supervisor explained that removal of GMC has not gone well as expected. It was, it was an experiment to provide better sports and better competition to the students, but it didn't go well as expected. So we're going to put back all the sports into the GMC, starting next season and then next year. Committee also discussed, uh, having a cricket team this year in Edison High School. Committee also discussed using the hard cricket ball for the high school instead of the tennis ball, uh, because it's the second year that we're going to be having the high school, uh, school cricket team. Committee, committee also discussed, uh, coaching standards and engagement expectation for the coaches. There's a new club sports that's being introduced. It's called girls', uh, flag football at EHS and J.P. Stevens and we are looking to host the club team for spring twenty twenty-five. Need to secure the funding and support and NJ SIA is going to make this as a sectional sport, starting spring of twenty twenty-six. And committee ended the meeting with discussion of hiring the permanent supervisor, the process to hire the permanent athletic supervisor at the J.P. Stevens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vishal Patel. I'll read the finance audit and oversight committee meeting. It was held on October fourteenth. It's now it's October thirtieth as we speak, just midnight. Uh, it was from October fourteenth, four PM to six PM at Ed Center. In attendance were myself, uh, Mr. Romano, Mr. Lugo, Mr. Schneider, Dr. Alderelli, uh, Mr. Toth, uh, Dr. Huss, Dr. Dhui, uh, Ms. Bechi, and, uh, Mr. Colibas. The items were discussed and architects from DMR, DMR Architects, Pradeep Kapoor and Shyam. Committee discussed the John Marshall lease purchase and rate. Uh, Business Administrator, Mr. Toth, provided details of John Marshall lease purchase and that TD Bank had won the bid. Uh, the committee was asked to, uh, provide input, to enter into preferred labor agreement. I know the gentleman left at Soville, that's his name, uh, the, the one who had some entertainment for us. So committee agreed to on that with the AFL of the building, Middlesex County Building and Construction Trades. DMR Architect presented a long-range facilities plan. Uh, they were commissioned by Edison Township Public Schools earlier this year to develop a comprehensive facilities master plan and update the district's long-range facility plan for submission into New Jersey Department of Education. This strategic planning effort is focused on ensuring the district's ability to provide and optimize educational environment that supports modern teaching practices and anticipated future needs. The last time district had this done was around twenty eighteen. In collaboration with the Board of Ed, uh, and District Representatives, DMR had carried out several critical tasks such as gaining insights into current teaching practices, curriculum rated, uh, special needs, projecting future enrollment, conducting thorough walkthrough of each and every, uh, building to assess the site conditions and building systems and creating space programs, uh, and concept plans tailored to each and every school. Furthermore, DMR had identified specific requirements for enhancing thermal comfort, including air conditioning across all the schools. Uh, they provided rough budget estimates to the committee and also prepared, uh, in, uh, aid, also helped in project prioritization, ensuring that the district can make informed decisions for the future when the district wishes to take over those, um, the work on the construction projects. Committee asked for approximate cost of air conditioning. I don't want to make anyone lose sleep over here, but do that, it's on the website, go take a look at it. Committee also asked DMR Architects to loo- look at the Success Academy and couple of other buildings, uh, before they provide a final revised plan to the committee. And that's all. Thank you. Now we'll open up for general public comments.
I think Miss Conway.
Uh, Mrs. Conway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could ask him, but I'll bring it up because I think it's important. Elizabeth Conway, Twenty Netherwood Circle. I'm just going to stop there. I just noticed and I was wondering if you could comment on the farm stand at J.P. Stevens. I like to stop there periodically and say hi to the kids and buy some wares, but I haven't seen it open. I know there was some construction going on, but I was wondering if there's a, a, a future. And that's it?
Yeah, renovations from us. Yeah. The, the farm stand was under renovations nearly complete. You know, we hope to have that, uh, opened up within the next probably two months, you know, getting it stocked. So, um, but yes, it was under a complete renovation.
Okay, thank you.
Next for public comments? Yes, Cristo?
Yeah.
Okay. Jerry.
Jerry Campione, First Vice President, ETEA. I just want to take just one minute to thank the children and the parents who came out to help us celebrate Halloween at our annual trunk retreat. Um, it, it's always a great time, uh, and, and it was once again this year. I also want to thank the staff, those that brought their cars and decorated and handed out the candy and also all the staff that collected all the candy. So, uh, sorry to the parents. We sent the kids home way more sugared up than they should have been, but there was plenty of candy and I appreciate that. I also would be remiss if I don't thank the, uh, administration at Menlo Park School for allowing us once again to have that there, as well as of course, the Board of Education and the custodial staff who help us to set things up and take things down. So thanks to all, a great time was had by all and wish everyone a very happy Diwali. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Cristo.
Oh, no.
Thank you. Jack Doherty. Oh, I'm recognized. Thank you so much.
You can start, Cristo.
Um, so when I came up here.
Name please and, and.
I identify as Jack, I, I'm identifying as Jack Doherty. So, um, the same way this school allows the kids to, uh, choose their own gender, many people change their names. I've, how do you know my name hasn't been? How did you know what my name was when I came up here? Because they told you to harass me and they told you to waste my time asking for my name when two other people refused to give their name, um, and address. So that's on the record and great, good job. I'm happy the whole world got to see your true face, Chris Lugo. I mean, fake Edison Republican Party. Of course they have you on there as a committee man.
Sir, sir.
And through the chair, I'm talking through the chair.
Through the chair, you can talk through the chair.
And I have been. You're not even the board president, sir.
The board president.
Point of privilege, president.
Point of privilege.
Shut him up.
There is no point of privilege.
Shut him up.
You do not talk to a board member.
Point of privilege.
You talk through the president.
Point of privilege, this is my time. Shut him up. Through the chair to Chris Lugo, Edison Republican, uh, party has shown its true face of Sylvie Angle. You voted, um, today you voted in favor to be against the parents and Governor Murphy's Democratic agenda. So I don't know what deals you have with Sam Joshi or the Democrats, but you've shown your true face today. And please stop, stop interrupting members of the public when it's their time to speak. This is my time. I don't interrupt you when you, when it's your time. Okay? So absolutely disgusting. Um, yeah. So I'm a part of the LGBTQ pedophilia community too. Um, I identify as an asexual hematoidite. For those who don't know what a hematoidite is, that means I have both penis and vagina. And obviously I'm able to make love to myself, but because I'm asexual, I'm not interested in myself. I know it's a little bit confusing, but it is what it is. So they, they had no idea I was a member of their community, but here I am, I'm out of the closet. Um, so I'm disgusted by you, Chris Lugo. You had one job up there and that was to defend these students, to defend this district from that pedoph- pedophilia ideology and you failed. You failed, but thank you for allowing me to prove that Edison Republicans are complete bozos, losers, and fake Republicans. But, yeah. So earlier I came to speak up here, two, two minutes was wasted from that zero integrity lawyer. Why is there a new lawyer? Why don't we have Mayor Mensch up here who knew how to do his job correctly? Um, Open Public Meetings Act, nowhere in the Open Public Meetings Act doesn't say I have to give my name and address and it certainly doesn't say I have to give my own name and address. Your policy says that, um, that policy's unconstitutional. I don't have to, uh, allow you to violate my Fourth Amendment rights so I can express my First Amendment right. Um, but yeah. Absolutely disgusting. You want to try to speak over me, anybody? You want to speak over me? Robert's Rules of Order says I can speak through the chair and criticize anything, call him names, you can't do nothing about it. First Amendment. And I came here to behave. I didn't come here to give no problem, but when the lawyer wants to start acting like [BLEEP], I'm going to treat him like [BLEEP]. People want to speak over me, I'm going to speak them, treat them the way they deserve to. You want to have me removed? Have me removed. It's one minute thirty-five seconds. You want to have me removed? Huh?
Ask you watch your language.
Watch your [BLEEP] language.
Sir.
What? Rosenfeld versus New Jersey. Watch your [BLEEP] language.
Are you?
So I just cursed. What are you going to do about it? Nothing, because you're legally allowed to. You don't have any respect for this country. You don't have any respect for the laws in the state of New Jersey or the United States Constitution. I just want to let you know, the New Jersey Constitution is actually, gives me even more freedom to express those rights. If Robert's Rules of Order says I'm allowed to speak through the chair and speak to Lugo, why the hell is Vice President Romano interrupting me? Why? Obviously you're not following your own decorum rules. So it's rules for me, but not for you guys. Absolutely disgusting. Um, [BLEEP] you, Chris Lugo. [BLEEP] you lawyer. Mr. Romano, I like you. I don't know why you interrupted me. I'm not going to curse you off, but [BLEEP] each and every one of you. Um, yeah. What are you going to do about it? Nothing. [BLEEP] you. Um, I'm also putting my mask on, which I'm legally allowed to do. You want to have me removed? Have a [BLEEP] nice day. Have a [BLEEP] nice day.
Any last, anyone else public comment? Brett.
Hello, I'm Benjamin Takach, Edison Township. Uh, my pronouns are he/him and I graduated from Edison High School in the class of twenty twenty-four last year. First of all, I'd just like to acknowledge that, uh, the name Jack Doherty is a famous influencer on YouTube and, um, I passed American History and the Fourth Amendment is about uh, searches and seizure. Thank you for all keeping, uh, five, seven, five, six in place and especially thank you to Vice President Romano for not allowing the polarization on the topic to sway your opinion. Uh, you are a great man in my ass. I speak for so many students that I know at Edison High School and also some of the staff in thanking you for your voice and your vote. Thank you for your time.
Brett Baker, I live in Edison, shocking, is probably one of the last men standing here. I, I feel obligated to report the following things to be true. One, uh, there are no unalienable rights. They give me a right as a parent, so I just needed to clarify that today. I have a background in political science and a, a bachelor's degree in public administration and public policy from the Michigan State University that tells me that there is no single right, uh, that is given to tell me how to be a parent. Uh, the capitalistic government tells us how to do, live our lives in general and so nothing was given by anybody to tell anybody what to do. Just needed to clarify that. Didn't say any of you said it, but the second thing I needed to stand up to do was to defend my profession, my chosen profession. I'm a K six certified teacher. I taught and led schools for fifteen years and I spent the last, uh, six-ish hours listening to a handful of people disparage the profession. And I know that those of you up on this board don't believe it, even if you voted yes to repeal the policy, but I need to make sure that this meeting ends, uh, uh, somber, it was heavy, but this meeting deserves to end to at least hear from me that I don't doubt that there are no teachers grooming children. And the sentiment that a teacher grooms a child to perceive a notion or perceive their identity or anything like that is just flat out offensive, uh, and especially for it to be lobbied by somebody who's not a teacher. I don't go to my mechanic and try and pretend like I know how to change a tire, even though I know how to do and, uh, I don't go to Taco Bell and try and make my own tacos and I really wish people would step out of the way of teachers' jobs and stop trying, trying to pretend that teachers are doing something that they're not. Teachers are hardworking individuals. Those of you up on the stage know this, so I'm just going to spend a couple more seconds defending the profession, uh, because I know you all kind of have to mind your Ps and Qs. But I'm going to say it, our teachers are great in this district and there were a lot of people not from Edison tonight and I loved every single minute of it because this room is great when it's full. But there were a handful of people that tried to insinuate that teachers in Edison are doing some nefarious things and I'm confident it's not happening. I'm confident in your leadership, Dr. Alderelli. I am confident in your board, in the leadership of this board. I hold true that this board has lost my trust, but you can re-earn it. Uh, but I just needed to stand up and defend the teachers of this district. Thanks, guys. Thank you. If everyone is done, uh, motion to end public comments. Motion to end public comments.
Motion.
Motion. Uh, Mr. Romano?
Second.
Second, Mr. Vishal Patel. All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments end. Uh, motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Romano?
Second.
Mr. Vishal Patel. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
All right, folks, can I ask everybody to leave, please?